Good morning, everybody. Aloha, kakahiaka, kahako. Welcome to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, our last one of the year. I don't know if that's good or not.
It's entering a new era.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ward. Good way to look at it. Roll call, please, Director. Good morning, Commissioner Hipo Lito.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, fellow Commissioners, Vice Chair. Chair, could I ask also if we could pan the camera more towards your left?
Oh.
So I can see all of the Commissioners.
We're working on that.
You don't want to see me.
Oh, he's like one of the, you're one of the only ones they can see.
Yeah, oh, Dave, we can see you. We can see you.
Not that camera.
The other one, that one, yeah. There we go.
Thank you, thank you.
Maybe down a little bit so we see less ceiling?
Yes.
No, that's just my head.
Perfect. So I'll continue. Good morning, Vice Chair Thompson, Director. I'm in Kahaloa Ma' office alone.
Good morning. Commissioner Dikos is excused. Commissioner Ke' aloha.
Morning, everyone. Good to see, see you all. I am at home in my office by myself.
Morning. Commissioner Lindsay.
Aloha mai kahako from Waileku. Good to see you all today. I am alone.
Mahalo. Commissioner Ward.
Good morning, everybody, Chair, Director, fellow Commissioners. I am obviously in the room and good to see everybody and glad to be at our last meeting. But the future.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson.
Aloha. Good morning. Top of the morning to all.
Chair there. Yes, good morning again, everybody. Thank you all for being here. So one housekeeping note before we dive into the agenda, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to follow up with everybody that based on our last meeting, the concerns of potential conflict of interest on the Grand Muleia issue. I will be meeting with the Board of Ethics tomorrow to present my case. It has been filed. I'm on the agenda and hopefully we'll have a position either way of what they decide. I do have the right to appeal in the event that they feel that it is a conflict and the next meeting would be, I believe it was January 8th is the next. So there is ample opportunity for me to, in the event that they want further information or clarification, that I'll be able to present and have a final ruling before our meeting on January 28th. I think it's 28th is the grant. So just want to make sure everybody was aware of that and that I've taken the appropriate actions to make sure that I can participate or we have a ruling that I should not.
Very nice, thank you. Thank you for the update. So on our agenda today, we have one public hearing item and then we go into more orientation. So Director, item B1, please.
Thank you, Chair. Kate L.K. Blystone, Planning Director, Transmitting Council Resolution Number 24-174 FD1 referring to the Maui Planning Commission, a proposed bill to amend Ordinance 3889 of 2011 relating to the change in zoning, conditional zoning for West Maui Project District 5, Pulelehua, for property situated in Mahinahina, Kahana, Lahaina, Maui, Hoi. Danny is your planner.
Thank you. Oh, one second, Danny, before you get started. I just want to make sure all the Commissioners got the latest documents that were received after posting from DWS. At least the thumbs up from, oh, Commissioner Lindsay?
That means it's the active links on the website, right?
Yeah, so there's a letter dated December 3rd and a letter dated December 6th from Department of Water Supply.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to confirm.
Chair, just to confirm, those have been uploaded so the public can also access them, those letters, I just want to confirm with the department?
Yes, staff is telling me yes.
Okay, and then if anyone in the meeting needs a copy, hopefully they can be provided a hard copy, I mean, the members of the public who would want it, but it sounds like that's accessible, thank you.
Yes, yep, covered. Thank you for checking. Okay, go ahead, message us.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, good morning, Commissioners. First item today as Director Blystone stated is a resolution from the Maui County Council, Resolution Number 24174. And basically what the council is proposing is to amend two conditions. That was part of the Pulelehua project approval. The packet that we sent you fairly thin and the reason why is because in accordance with Chapter 19, 51020, the department has 60 days to bring resolutions before this commission. So the county council had two meetings discussing this item. We did provide you with links to that meeting, but we didn't have minutes. So hopefully you folks had a chance to watch that and start to get an idea of the purpose of this proposal. Part of that conversation was also regarding whether or not deleting the second condition was actually necessary. The practices usually when you comply with a condition, we don't take that condition away, we still leave it as part of the approval. But in any case, today we have representatives from Pulelehua, Kainisheki and Sarah, sorry, I didn't get your last name. And we also have the Director of Water Supply, John Stuffelbean, on the call to assist you folks. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicants' representatives.
Okay, aloha, Chair and Commission members. So we're going to go into the project details. This project is located in West Maui, right below the Kapalua Airport. And it has, this project has received broad-based support from grassroots environmental organizations such as Maui Tomorrow, Sierra Club, Stand Up Maui, to most of the construction unions. And it is a fully entitled Maui County Code, Chapter 2.96, workforce housing project. It is 304 acres with five phases and it is approved to build 800 units project-wide, 400 market and 400 affordable in perpetuity. Phase one was originally slated to be 120 market rentals with 64 sale affordable units and 60 affordable rental units. The phase one now is 240 affordable rentals. Some of the project highlights. So I just wanted to let you folks know that, that the housing provider really listened to the community and heard what the needs were. And so all 800 units will be prioritized by length of residency and this will allow our longtime generational families to have a priority. Also, two weeks after the fire, the housing provider offered to convert all the market rate units to make the project 100% affordable. So we are working with the county phase by phase to hopefully make that happen. The first 240 affordable rentals will be reserved for residents impacted by the fire and will be prioritizing seniors, our kupuna first in order. And the construction of the project is all single level, so that makes it really easy for folks to access their units with parking directly in front. And of course, it's pet friendly with miles of walking trails and a dog park. And in order to promote resiliency and responsible uses of our resources, the project is as much of the wastewater that is produced from the project, it goes right down to the treatment facility and then the project is bringing all of that R1 water back to the project to use for irrigation. And as you have heard in numerous meetings and testimony and in your communities, everyone is really crying out for rent control and affordable housing, there's no better rent control. And there is also no STRs or B&amp;Bs allowed project-wide. So why are we here today? We are asking that the Maui Planning Commission recommend to the Maui County Council to amend Ordinance 3889 by deleting Condition Number 2. And this condition is up on the, up on your slide here, but Pulelehua has provided water source and water storage and is requesting the county to issue permits so we can begin all of the community-serving infrastructure. Maui County Code, Chapter 2.96, workforce housing projects are exempt from needing to prove water source. And Condition 2 is really a duplicate condition because the project is already providing its own water source in a number of ways. Pulelehua has complied with conditions of, or the requirements of Condition 2, but is not being provided permits to begin work until Seaworm approves its water use permits. Deleting the condition would simply allow Pulelehua to be considered exempt from proving water source like all other 2.96 projects while we are all awaiting Seaworm's approval. Just a little bit of history, during the 2011 council deliberations, removing the condition was discussed due to its redundancy with the water code exemption and Corporation Council offered their, their statement that the way it was drafted would still allow the project to be served by the county. And if the council did not want that to happen, then they would have to put in an explicit condition that says they can't be allowed. So it was left open by the council. Discussing the long-term reliable water sources, we understand that long-term reliable supply of water is required to build housing and the project has followed all the mandatory testing requirements by regulating agencies to ensure reliable supply from its three sources. So these are the three sources. The project has drilled two wells that can insert, can serve the entire project. They also have a water delivery agreement. Because the project was formerly a Maui Land and Pine project and then was sold, along with that came a water delivery agreement. And so it has a surface water agreement that can also serve all of the phases of the project. And in addition to that, the project has secured a conditional will serve from Hawaii Water Service to serve all of Phase 1. So that is three times the amount of water needed to condition or to satisfy Condition Number 2. So because of Condition Number 2, the county hasn't managed this project the way it would any other workforce housing project. And until the condition is deleted, the project is not being considered eligible for permits to begin installing community-serving infrastructure while we await Seaworm approval. The project has requested from the county DWS the ability to begin construction while awaiting Seaworm approval. And we just wanted to note that, you know, we don't actually need water in the pipes, you know, in the faucets until the rental units are built. And that will take approximately two years to put in all of the infrastructure. So really, we're just trying to get started putting in all of the infrastructure and building the units. And we anticipate that Seaworm will approve use of one of the water sources before then. So the request, the request to delete Condition 2 came after DWS listed this condition as one of the reasons that the county could not consider assisting the project with a temporary will serve letter to allow the project to move forward with putting in that infrastructure. This amendment was discussed at the council once and in committee twice. And during deliberations, the council did raise questions about whether deleting Condition Number 2 was necessary for the project to be exempt from proving water source and to move forward on the infrastructure. And the answer provided by DWS was inconclusive. And so after the committee meeting, two letters were sent to DWS. One, asking if deleting Condition Number 2 is necessary for DWS to consider it exempt from proving reliable source as a 2.96 project and as an additional solution to this ongoing delay to build a 100% affordable housing phase. And the second letter was to ask DWS if they would accept the conditional will serve letter from Hawaii Water Service. And the objective was to receive clear direction and determination from DWS if the project can move forward while avoid taking up your valuable time and the council. But to date, DWS has not provided a pathway forward. So that is why we're here, asking for your assistance to get building long-term affordable rentals for those affected by the fire. And just to reiterate, Pulelehua is providing at least two times the affordable units required by Maui County Code 2.96 and has proven three times the water source normally required by the Maui County Code. And so we are just asking for a potential tool that could assist the project in moving forward in, as you understand, a housing crisis, but more like a catastrophe at this point. So we're here to answer any of your questions.
Members, keep your questions in mind. We'll go into public testimony and then circle back for questions all at the same time. Do we have anybody signed up to testify?
Yes, online, we have three people. First person is Mark Anthony Clemente, to be followed by, and I apologize, I'm going to butcher his name, Pani Meatoga, and then to be followed by Tam.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Mark Anthony Clemente, testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters. We are in opposition of this item. I did submit written testimony and I do stand on that testimony, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. West Maui is designated as a water management area and this means that the state is taking control of distribution. So no new wells, no new water diversions. Further, my understanding is that Seaworm needs to approve, that that's what, the approval that's been, been, the project's been waiting for, but Seaworm is not entertaining any new water permits because they're still in the process of determining whether there's enough water for existing users. After the Seaworm approval, I believe the project also needs approval from the State Department of Health. Due to the nature of the processing of the water, there's a discharge. And the engineering needs approval from the State Department of Health. And then after those approvals, then the Department of Water Supply in Maui would need to approve. So for these reasons, you know, until we can get a determination that there is a long-term reliable source of water, we believe that the projects should not proceed. It's akin to, you know, telling everyone, we're going to build this great car, we got the fuel, but everyone else is saying, hey, we don't have the fuel for the car. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions, Commissioners, for the testifier? Singnan, mahalo again.
Next person is Pani Meatoga, to be followed by Tam.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Commission. Pani Meatoga, you got it correct. Thank you so much. You did a great job. I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Mark. We are in opposition to this resolution. For the record, Pani Meatoga III with operating engineers, local three, I'm the political deputy director, and we are in opposition to this resolution. As you can see from the testimonies that have been submitted, the letters from DWS, there's a lot of things that, that require them not to be exempted. And just on a side note, I just wanted to reiterate that it took a while for us to get this developer to come to the table to actually implement prevailing wage law. It took us a couple of hearings to be able to make that happen because at one point in time, this developer said that Hawaii State prevailing wage law did not apply. And it took us a while to get them to come to the table and understand that it does apply. And because of that, I would be very leery about approving something like this without, without going to the right, the correct process, how Mark has reiterated that. It may take a while and we understand that there is a dire need for housing, but to do it the right way, to make sure that everything works out in the long term, I think is important. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Oh, come back, Commissioner Ke' aloha, is that a question? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Meatoga. Can you say who you represent one more time because I didn't hear?
Oh, sorry. Operating Engineers Local 3, we're all of the heavy equipment operators here in the state of Hawaii. I'm the political deputy director. I present, represent all of our 3,000 members here in the island.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any further questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, mahalo again.
Okay, next testifier is, first name Tam, no last name given.
Aloha mai kahako, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Tamara Paulton and I live in West Maui. I've lived here for over 20 years and I'm, I'm testifying in support of this resolution. We lost over, you know, we lost thousands of homes on August 8th, 2023. Majority of those homes lost were rentals. Since the fire, we've had two projects, two permanent projects being built. One is a replacement of Ka'aulu O'Kupu Ohi, which is 89 units, 60% and below affordable rental, low-income rental. And we're finishing, so that's a rebuild of what was lost. And we're finishing Ka'aulu O'Kukuya, which is a 200-unit low-income rental. Other than that, there has been no permanent projects put forward or proposed to be built in the near future. And part of it is like Mr. Clemente said, because of the ground and surface water special management area designation, despite the period ending a couple of days before the fire to submit your water use permit applications, in the year after the fire, nothing was done because of lies told by Mr. Martin and the governor. And then they had to like, you know, find a new Seaworm Deputy Director. And so this has put us back considerably. You know, I think that people that don't live and work in West Maui or have to drive through the burn zone every day don't realize the gravity of the situation we're in. Affordable housing is suicide prevention. Affordable housing is mental health solutions. And people are really struggling. People have lost or used up all of their insurance, loss of use, alternative living expense monies. And, you know, this isn't anything as radical as trying to take out 450 affordable homes from a condition. This isn't anything as radical as railroading a project through the, even, oh, is that three minutes?
Now you have 30 seconds?
Oh, okay. This isn't anything as radical as railroading a project through in less than a month that hasn't even submitted its preliminary engineering reports to the Department of Health. This is simply a handout for the thousands of people that don't have any options on where they will live and time is running out. We've built temporary housing all over the place and we're using water. There's thousands of unaffordable units entitled, you know, Kapalua Ma'uka, Central Kapalua, Ka'Anapali 2020. So it's really a matter of life and death here for a lot of people that have no other options. And you see how the county treats our unsheltered people. This is going to be what's going to happen to West Maui if we don't start building some permanent housing soon.
Mahalo for your testimony and for being here. Commissioners, any questions for the testifier? Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you for testifying today. How many years has this been project, have been working on it?
I think it got its original entitlement in 2011. So obviously they had been working on it for a number of years prior to that, but I think the new owner only bought it recently, maybe 2015-ish or so, 16, 17.
And I'm sure it's going to take a couple of years for this project to be done. Do you foresee any problems with water after that, when they actually have to turn on a faucet?
I would say there's guaranteed enough source for the first phase because the FEMA in their placing of temporary units was also looking at the Ka'Anapali 2020 project. And that's how Hawaii Water Service, I believe, verified the source because that was going to be used instead for the temporary FEMA unit on Ka'Anapali. But I think they ultimately decided not to do that because of Blue Rock. I also been working with the Lieutenant Governor previously on a 200, about 88 unit project in Napili area with Maui Land and Pine. That is outside of the community plan area and doesn't have the correct zoning. They would like to make it permanent, but at this time, I think that has been scaled down to 90, 90 units. And that one, they had wanted to make, be permanent. And so there is water and to me, what the ground and surface water special management area designation is truly about is prioritizing our water needs, you know, kuliana, riparian rights, domestic use in terms of housing and further prioritizing affordable and workforce housing over the luxury units because somebody needs to do the work.
Yes, and thank you.
Further questions for the testifier, Commissioners? Commissioner Lindsay?
Hi, thank you for your testimony today. Given the housing crisis and the temporary housing that exists out in West Maui and the time it takes to create a project like this, a great project. Um and the time it takes to create a project like this, a great project. Um what I I am imagining those temporary houses being less temporary than we assume. Um and like, we only have a straw that's so big, so we can only take so much water. I know the water's coming out of the pipes now in those temporary housing, but if we assume that those temporary houses become a little bit more permanent. And a large hu- a large development like this um comes through also. Um plus, I'm not sure what else is already on the plan. Um. Will there be enough water for all of those needs, in your opinion? Um be- just because it's only, there's only so much.
Yeah, um for the FEMA and state builds the Hawaii Interim Housing Program, the Hawaii Interim Housing Program um. Is on lands that were going to be transferred to H H L. And um you know, as we know, D H H L has first-rate water regardless of any other thing. Um so the the program or Hawaii Interim Housing Program. Um will likely be more permanent than temporary, just with different um residents. Um beneficiaries instead of, I mean, there are a lot of beneficiaries there. One of the. Options was displaced beneficiaries would get first um. Priority for the state program, but um that one will likely continue on in a different format. Um for the FEMA ones, um those cannot continue on on that H H F T C Crown Lands. Um FEMA is a temporary project, but. I think that the plan for that one is to possibly um their modular permissible. The units, so they can be sold and relocated to other properties. Um. And if if in relocated, like people buy them in another part of the island or. Or on their lot, they would just be restoring the water rights that um they had originally had. Um you know, like if a displaced person buys it and then puts it on their own lot, it's replacing their usage. Um. I believe Maui Land and Pine um built their own project. I think it was like fifty units uh temporary. I don't know that that would automatically be a lot to continue, but most of the other temporary going forward right now. Is um on people's own lots. Um I don't really know of too mu- much other um prod- temporary projects, you know, with like over fifty or a hundred units. Um except for the one that I'm working on with uh Lieutenant Governor Luke, and. The hope is that would become permanent, but um we would still need to change. Um do a community plan amendment, change in zoning, district boundary amendment for it to be allowed to become permanent. Because it's not in the community plan, it's not on the correct zoning.
Okay. In summary, um I'm think um so, yes, you think for the sh- because. Of the nature of the other temporary projects, um the use won't exceed the use pre-August eighth uh twenty-three.
I mean, there there is other things going on in the burn zone, like um. We're considering bills one oh three, one oh four, and one oh five still yet that you guys had referred to us, which would in. Allow for increased density, although there is some um talk that. Um it's a little bit legalizing what had previously been illegal but widespreadly done, like, you know. Most people know that a wet bar really isn't necessarily a wet bar, but a kitchenette or a subunit. Um and then um you know, some of the projects, we're not sure if they will rebuild. Um some of the projects that are rebuilding are wanting to increase density, I think. Um. This is, this is not intended to be a project on the county water system, so. If that pans out, Seaworm gives them permission to use either of their water sources, the ditch source or the um well source. It wouldn't necessarily affect the county unless, you know, it affects the county in. The ability to dig new wells. I believe the county is already digging a well up Mahina Hinana. Um I'm not sure if they have Seaworm approval to use that well that they're digging, or if it's beyond the test well. Um but I think, you know. If this project doesn't have enough water. Then we're under a really moratorium for West Maui, and um to me. The moratorium really should be on luxury developments until we have enough workforce housing. And so there's so many other projects that have not yet received or gotten this far. Um Puukoli Village Maoka is another fifty percent affordable project for West Maui. Under the two oh one G, which preceded the two oh one H program. Kaanapali twenty twenty is another fifty percent affordable um housing project. And then you have Central Kapalua, which is luxury. You got Kapalua Maoka, which is luxury. Um. And so there's there, there's definitely a need to have that ground and surface water special management area designation with. All of those projects on the books. But I think that, to me, the intention and my reason behind supporting it is to ensure that. Um our workforce and our local people will have a place to live before we overextend and build all the luxury that's on the books.
Um, okay. Thank you. Um you, I think you've answered my questions. No more questions.
Thank you. Further questions for the testifier? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your testimony. Uh you spoke to something that um is very personal to me. About mental health, stability, and. The impacts of. Long-term, what that can actually. Do to families and those that are loved um in the the Ohana, and. Um can you speak maybe a little bit more to what either your or the the council's perspective is or or thoughts are around that? So we have maybe a greater understanding of the potential impact. Um. It's been, it's been over a year. Sorry, I'm getting a little feedback here. Um it's been over a year. Hearing that the project, if it were to move forward, is at least another two years, three years of displacement, in my personal opinion. Is just heartbreaking for people that have gone through something extremely, extremely personal and tense. And I I would just like to understand your perspective, sorry, on. What that would mean to the community, takeout finances, takeout process, and and humanize this. I found this on the web for what that would mean. So, sorry. Siri just likes to jump.
Sure.
Um so, sorry, um but if you could share your insights or or maybe the council's thoughts, I I think it's something that. We need to talk about per- again, because. I think it's an important issue in in putting some other things aside in in. Understanding that I I think would be helpful, so thank you.
Sure, uh you know, a lot of people call me when they're at the end of um all. Everything that they can look into, and um a lot of times. They're losing hope because everything that's supposed to offer them a chance um is not. Is not something that they qualify. You know, the council um promoted the A D U program, a hundred thousand dollar grant for. Um building an A D U. Many uh survivors, it got their hopes up. Only to find out this would, a replacement house wouldn't qualify under the terms of the program. Um hearing that FEMA was gonna extend for a year. Um got many people's hopes up until they found out that now they're gonna be charged rent for. A a place where they may not want to live on the other side that costs more than they can afford. Um. You know, people in the aftermath of the fire made a lot of poor decisions, and I'm told that that's a normal thing because they're desperate. Um and then uh and I'm I'm not saying that they're poor decision makers when you're. Um you have nothing left and you're in survival mode, you know, you. You latch on to anything that you think a solution is possibly without doing their due diligence. I've had survivors um purchase property on ag land that don't have water or sewer and um. You know, run into shifty issues on the build, and they're just, you know, they do call me and they they ask like. You know, in terms of also the permitting, dealing with shifty, dealing with the shoreline issues, they feel like people are colluding to make them. Wanna commit suicide, and these are calls I get weekly. Um. Just, just um dealing with the commute. With all the people coming in and out to work, as well as the people coming in and out to go to school and whatnot. It adds easily another two to four hours to your day on top of, you know. Trying to replace all your stuff, trying to get your kids back into a normal lean. Um. We've had folks um be told that they can't rebuild with fire-resistant material. And uh in the historic districts, if you're facing a historic building. And and that only serves to up people's trauma. Um. People continually remember how it is to run away from the fires, and then they see um poles. Being put back up on Front Street when they repeatedly asked for undergrounding. Um it. There's, there's a lot of people slipping through the cat cracks with the disaster case management program. Um and instead of uh embracing it and trying to fix it. A lot of folks in the program um deny that people are fi- slipping through the cracks. Um. We don't have enough shelter space for everyone. Kahalea Keola, our our West Maui shelter burnt down. People that are in private rooms in the shelter um. Are are being told that they're pre-fire homeless, and so they don't qualify for all of the same. Um benefits as someone who was in a house under their own. Uh a big point of stress for folks is. Um people having been told they were FEMA ineligible for a year and a half because. They have insurance, and as their alternative living expense and loss of use runs out, right when they think they'll be. Eligible for um the state program, they all of a sudden become FEMA eligible. With not the same kind of benefits, the first wave of people who were FEMA eligible yet now. Instead of the one-year free rent that the Hawaii Interim Housing Program is offering, they're going. They're no longer eligible for that, and they have to go to the FEMA side where they'll have to pay rent, which is cutting into. Their um insurance settlement, which is already not enough to rebuild their houses. And so it's just a lot of um instability. We do know that FEMA and insurance. Has jacked up the prices of rentals. We do know that um Councilmember Kama, who chairs the. Housing and Land Use Committee, said that she's not going to entertain any legislation on rent stabilization. So the easiest way to provide that rent stabilization is to create affordable rentals, and we. We're a little bit um. We're not full up of low income, sixty percent and below, but that's the only opportunities given, which is like, you know. Fifty thousand dollars for your household income. You can't make fifty thousand dollars max for your household income and make it. In West Maui. I don't know um how many people live in West Maui, but. Um if your household is making fifty thousand dollars with a year, which is the high end of low-income rental housing. Um you you need to buddy up with like four people making fifty thousand and and then try rent a house or something because. The math doesn't math otherwise.
That's thank you for that. Thank you for that. I I I hope that shed some light to individuals that may not um. Have been impacted or be aware of the the challenges of and and long-term. Challenges of mental stability and health due to individual issues, but to then add on. Such a devastating situation that people had to flee from, and and I too have um. Been shared many heartbreaking stories that. E- even to even repeat, I can't do without breaking down, so I won't, but. But I think it's important to understand the the longer-term impact. To those individuals and their families and. How they grow and feel love and prosper moving forward. And sometimes I think we just need to put process in politics and. Other things aside and do what's right for people that. That need a future and need hope. Thank, thank you for that clarification. Apologies for my emotions, and it's it's a personal issue, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh commissioners, further questions for the testifier? Um I do have one follow-up question, um because Councilmember, you're the one who introduced this um legislation, right? Would you be able to go into like the intent, like the goal of this, from what I am gathering, is to find the fastest way to enable this. Project to build? Is that correct?
Yeah, um you know, the first two hundred forty affordable rentals can't come soon enough. Um. We know the four hundred fifty years, however many in uh the interim housing program above Lea Li'i. Um we really need to give that back to D H H L at the end of five years in order to keep a promise made to the beneficiaries. And um you know, without a place for at least those folks though, um. I don't see anything on the horizon that will be ready, permanent in time to um. Move those people from the um Lea Li'i site that is supposed to be given back to D H H L, so it's. Partially um. One step to honor our commitments to the beneficiaries. Um. And you know, I'm I'm not sure if all of those people will be the ones to move, be able to move into this project. But if we don't do anything, it pretty much ensures they won't have a place to live, even. The two hundred and eighty-eight affordable unit Wailea six seventy, they haven't even um submitted their preliminary engineering report on their wells. These guys have submitted it over a year ago and are still waiting, so if. If we're waiting on the two hundred eighty-eight units that Wailea six seventy is gonna provide, they haven't even um. Submitted their preliminary engineering reports yet, and um. I don't know of anything else permanent coming up in West Maui. I do know that a lot of the government rebuilds. Are hoping to rebuild, but that's a good five years out, I imagine. Um. And so we need a place for people to have people re- to be ready. When they have to vacate other temporary situations.
Got it. Thank you for that background. Uh Commissioner Hippolito?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Councilwoman Alton, um my question is, um under your understanding. The two hundred forty Phase One, is it rentals or long-term rentals?
Um, long-term rentals is my understanding.
Okay, and so is the other uh balance, which I saw four hundred market. And four hundred affordable homes. Is it under your understanding that it is long-term rentals?
Yeah, all of them is long-term rentals. Um is my. Yeah, all of them is long-term rentals um is my understanding. No short-term renting allowed. And four hundred affordable.
Thank you. Uh the next question, um it was a statement made by the applicant earlier. That they are working with the county ensure that hundred percent is affordable. Um I heard some hesitation. Do you see any issues with that?
I don't see any issues. I don't know that the administration is um willing to entertain that. I'm not sure why. Um specifically, but um I do know that it wouldn't be for free, you know. Like, things have to pencil out. And um when. The project, I met with the project and the former Director of Housing and Human Concerns, who's now only the Director of Human Concerns, Director Tu Hako. Although they were providing over twenty-five percent of the market rate. Um she was unwilling to give them any uh housing credits. And um so, I mean, I don't know if this project got a lot of bad legal advice or what, and that's why they came to the county. Asking for help with the um infrastructure um. And so, you know, that's on a reimbursement basis. The money hasn't really been given unless they've submitted receipts. And um you know, for West Maui and the range of incomes that we receive here, we really. I I kinda think that we also need market rate affordables as well because um. A lot of people, although they're barely making it, don't qualify for affordable um. Sometimes it's like you gotta have a lot of kids to qualify for affordable, cuz um. You can't, you can't make it on the income that they see is affordable in West Maui.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any further questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you again for being here.
Okay, next testifier is Johan Lal.
Aloha, uh Johan Lal testifying on behalf of myself in favor of B one. Um I don't know anything about this besides uh what was just discussed and what kind of she presented, but um. Fifty percent affordable is a a major benefit, especially because a lot of them are rentals and there's a big new need for. Rental housing for all the people who can't qualify for a mortgage um. There is one thing, uh I haven't heard any discussion about whether those affordable um for sale and rental units are affordable in perpetuity. So I don't know if this would be the place to discuss that, but maybe it can be um brought up and maybe uh a part of your recommendation. Um the other thing is that uh a couple of guys from the unions had testified against this on uh I think procedural grounds. And I wanna point out that when community groups or native Hawaiian organizations. Uh are against projects or file lawsuits, there's always this accusation that they're stopping affordable housing or that they are just. Delaying affordable housing. And you always hear from. One planning commissioner in particular, you know, this project's been around forever and we need to just move along with it. But often, when there's procedural problems, that's a legitimate concern, so that should be addressed, whether it's. Unions or uh Hawaiians or whoever it is. Um but uh in general, I'm in support of this, uh uh I'm in support of anything that. Creates more affordable housing, especially for the people of West Maui. Um three of my neighbors uh here in Kihei are. Lahaina Fire Survivors uh with their rent being paid by FEMA and I think that might run out soon, so I'm concerned about people like that. Whether it runs out in a year or months or whatever, those people are gonna need housing and it really should be in West Maui where. Their jobs there, um some of their family, all that kinda stuff is rather than, you know, an hour away. Uh it's great having them around, but. It's stressful for them to have to drive that far. Uh so anyway, mahalo.
Mahalo for testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Chair. That's the end of the um list.
Okay, uh last call for testimony, anybody? Nobody in the gallery, so anybody online that wishes to testify, please write your name in the chat. Otherwise, um testimony will close in three, two, one. Testimony is closed. Um Commissioners, do you have um? Questions for the applicant's representative? Commissioner Hippolito.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Director Stufelbein.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Director. I have a question. Condition number two states. Um that non-potable potable. Water source storage transmission improvements necessary to serve Pulelehua. In accordance with the requirements of the County of Maui Department of Water Supply. What have changed within the DWS that this condition is being requested to be removed? What assurances that we have with the DWS that there is sufficient? Water if we should remove this condition?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think those are two separate questions. Yeah, yeah, the first question is, do we uh object to condition two being removed, which the answer is no, we're fine with it being removed. Um but that doesn't relate to whether there's sufficient water. Um that's a separate question, which I can talk about if you'd like me to. Um but yeah, we're we're not, we're. We're not opposed at all to removing condition two. But then there's a second question as to, is there, is there sufficient source of water?
Yes, if you could continue.
Sure. So um well, I'll start with with uh kind of the the big picture before the fire. Oh, and in the county system, there was already a situation where. There was insufficient supply to meet demand. The reliable capacity before the fire. Was about four point three million gallons per day and the demand was five point six million gallons per day. So we were already in a situation where there was inadequate supply to meet the demand in West Maui, in the county system. And that was being satisfied by frankly, over pumping some wells and using surface water, probably more than we'll be able to ultimately. So the fire happened. Uh right now, we're able to meet demand, no problem. But our focus is to make sure that we have adequate supply going forward. To meet the demands of those who are rebuilding in Lahaina. And 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 we are able to meet the demands of the temporary housing because. Uh the temporary housing will ultimately be removed and replaced with with permanent housing as the rebuild happens. And as was mentioned earlier, this is even kind of made more difficult because there is a a desire for increased density. Uh which will increase the demand. And we're getting a lot of requests for people to just upsize their meters. To get larger meters than before, and we're approving those. Um and of course, there's also the demand ultimately for DHHL. So so as we look at going ahead, our focus has been and it is right now to make sure that we meet the demands of the rebuilding. People in Lahaina. So then um in terms of new sources, you know, what are the possibilities in terms of meeting the demand in West Maui? Um so certainly wells are a possibility. And two of the three options that were presented earlier involve wells. There's the wells on the property and there's also well potentially water from um Way Water Services wells. But again, all of those wells, because you know designation changed everything. With respect to how the water law is is in effect in West Maui. By designation, the state has taken control of the allocate, of the distribution allocation of water in West Maui. So any new wells need to be approved by by Seaworm, by the Commission of Water and Fish Management, which is the state. And as was mentioned earlier, they are currently only addressing existing uses, not new uses. I'll talk about that in a minute. So in terms of wells, now we have a well that is under construction um that we think will get permitted. It has not been permitted. We think it will be because it's basically replacing an existing use. We have four other wells that we are proceeding with. To be to be prepared, to be prepared um, you know, if Seaworm ultimately decides to allow additional. Wells to be to be um used in West Maui. So we're prepared for that. And we do believe there is additional water, groundwater in some of the aquifers in West Maui. But um that's based on what the state um has calculated as what's called the sustainable yield. Which I'm sure most of you know about, which is the sustainable yield is the amount of water that the state believes um can be. Um pumped out of an aquifer on a continuous basis kind of forever. And the sustainable yield has been calculated for all the different aquifers in West Maui. And um but what we are hearing and what we what we know is happening is the state is reevaluating. Those numbers for sustainable yield and because of climate change and other factors. So it's likely that those sustainable yield numbers may actually go down. Um so I will tell you that next week, we're meeting with the state Seaworm. As as they're going through the process of looking at sustainable yield. So so um. You know, there's no guarantee, I hate to say it, there's no guarantee that the wells, that new wells will be approved. Uh just because of um you know, the 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 law that requires that this, you know, the state looks at that. So um. So that's kind of the the well situation is what is the sustainable yield? Um I I can tell you that we are working with Seaworm also to look at whether they can pivot a bit. And start looking at new use permits before they finish uh going through all the existing use permits. And they said they're willing to entertain that. We're meeting with them early next year to talk about the possibility of. Um making some exceptions to that and looking at some existing use permits. So we're working with them very closely on both. What is the sustainable yield ultimately gonna be? And can we, can we deal with these urgent problems? More quickly by looking at some of the new use permits, especially when they're related to um. Uh to public trust uses of water. The second potential source of water is surface water. And as I mentioned, one of the three options is additional surface water from Island and Pine. That water comes from Hanakahau Stream through plantation area ditches. And uh the question is, is there additional water there available for development? And that hinges on a few fa- factors. One is, how much water is there actually in the stream? And of course, there's less water in streams than there used to be. And then how much is being required to be left in the stream? That's the interim in stream flow standard. And so um, you know, again, we're we're under the understanding that. Those will not decrease the the flow standards. Um they're for traditional cultural purposes, those are very important. And they may actually increase. So how would you get additional surface water? Well, the most likely scenario. Is to put in storage to capture some of the high flows. And so we've we've implemented a uh study to look at. Working with the way, working with the Way Water Services in My Island and Pine to look at potential for additional storage along the ditch area. That would then capture some of that, those high flows, which then could be available for additional stream flow capacity. So um in terms of the path ahead, you know, we do think that we are uh doing what we can to try to support. Additional affordable housing in West Maui by both working with Seaworm on what's the actual sustainable yield. Um what is, can we revise, can we pivot on the process to to look at some of these real urgent demands? And also, is there additional stream flow available? So I hope that answers your question, but that's kind of the the water situation from our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, for very detail. I appreciate that. Question I'm gonna ask is on fire service uh, Director. If uh this, so Pulelehua would need some fire service. If the developer would put in additional storage tanks to support. Emergency fire service for the subdivision, would that take some of the load off of DWS?
True, potentially. Yeah, we 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 could look at that and see if, I mean, obviously for for fires, that that's usually what governs how much. How much water you need on, you know, instantaneous basis. So certainly, um so certainly storage is an element of that. So we could certainly take a look at that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Um thank you, Director. Question for you. It sounds from what what you've just explained that we're, you're exploring kind of. For lack of better terms, call it old school, the way we've done the stuff. Where's the thought process or where or have you had um? Thoughts around how adopting different technology or advanced processes. Could not only advance but exceed time um overall capacity needs. For West Maui specifically, um such as programs, that at least one that I'm familiar of, which is. Called Wind Power Water, maybe variation of that um. That is being reviewed and and considered. It's something in Wailea that. Um on our association that we're entertaining and looking at to uh implement and test its. Um various ways of funding. It can be done through. Um fundraising, so it's not actually a burden to the county or to any individual. So I guess. Question me is is where are you guys in that thought process of kind of advancing technology that. Can bring greater need in a timely manner at at a low level cost? It's different than kind of the old school traditional ways that doesn't impact the INA and um. Provides more to our community from a solar power. You know, less impactful to the to the INA, to things of that nature, so. Sorry, that was, it was a question and a comment, apologies for that.
No, 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 I really like that question. So absolutely. So so what are the, what are the potential new sources of water? Beyond groundwater and and uh surface water. So um the first one that comes to mind is recycled water. And uh of course, as was mentioned, this project is designed designated to use um. Recycled water for un- for uh for non-potable uses, which is good. Uh I would mention that uh. That there is also a, there are discussions happening around the state about going beyond that. In fact, there was a, I was at the conference last week in Honolulu with, oh, there must have been three hundred people there from around the state, from all the islands, talking about. How do we get to potentially uh recycling water for drinking water purposes? So that would be a potential new source of water. Uh I'm not saying we should go there. Uh I think it's something we should look at. Um you know, there's two thousand of these plants around the world. Dozens in the states. And so, you know, one possibility is to to go even further with recycled water. Um that is four to five years in developing regulations, just to make that happen. So that's not gonna happen quickly, but it's something we should look at. The second possibility is to look at desalination. And we have initiated, we have almost completed a study on desalination of both rakish water and seawater. In West Maui and South Maui. Um and we're ready to go out to, you know, to the public to talk about kind of what we're looking at. And we realize there's a lot, we need to do a lot of public engagement on that one to see where the public is on that. The issues, of course, are. Um as they've always been, the cost, the energy use, and what do you do with residual? So so I would mention that we are actively looking at that as well. I'm familiar with the technology that you mentioned, that's pretty cutting edge. Obviously, we're open to that as well um in terms of of, you know, fog capture or using the wind and so on. So we've looked at that. Um I was, we're looking at that too. So yeah, absolutely. We're we're looking at all possible technologies. For how we can develop additional sources of water without having the negative effect on. Drink withdrawing water from streams, which has been a historic practice in Hawaii. So thanks for the question.
Thank you.
Uh Commissioners, further questions for the Director? Uh Commissioner Kehaloa.
Um this, a question is also for Director Stufelbein um. While the Department of Water Supply is working with Seaworm um on the new sustainable yield. Um numbers that you mentioned and exploring. The feasibility of the three potential water sources for Pulelehua, Pulelehua. Do you see any disadvantages with, cuz I imagine that process may take some time. Um do you see any disadvantages with granting Pulelehua to start? Do you see any disadvantages with granting Pulelehua to start laying the infrastructure in the meantime and say Sea Worm comes back and for whatever reasons is no, none of these water sources are sufficient? Like, is there any issue with, that you see with just letting them go ahead with starting the, the infrastructure framework since that process alone can take, you know, years?
I hope it doesn't take years. I hope it's more than that or months, but I do see disadvantages of that. I mean, what I, what I don't want to do, what we, what I don't think we can do is to approve additional development. And then at some point in the future, there's not enough water for existing customers. In fact, if you look at, you know, our basic, you know, code 1404 dash 10, it says that we should only, we should only consider new uses if we've determined that there's sufficient water supply to take, you know, for, without any detrimental effect to those already served. So if, if, you know, at this point, if there's no additional water supply and this is approved, then it's our, it's our position that there is a high potential for a detrimental impact to those already served, especially those rebuilding in the Ina. So yeah, so I, I wouldn't be, I would be opposed to supporting, to approving any new development if it was going to have an impact on the existing users. And the only way that can be avoided is to make sure there's a sufficient water.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ward, you had another question?
Thank you, Chair. I didn't, so Director, you just indicated that potentially you don't necessarily think that the evaluation is going to potentially take years, potentially months. So would you be open to a condition that once you've determined within X period of time that you think is kind of reasonable, that the project could move forward? Because again, I, I'm going back to, this is about people's lives, their mental health, the longevity, what's happening to the kikis and what damage that has to this community and to those individuals? And it was referenced earlier of suicide rates that when we're talking years of displacement of people that ran for their lives because we don't have a good plan and we're concerned about the process and not those people? I struggle with that because we as individuals in our roles can make change, we can make conditions, we can push people, we can do things to find solutions, to just fall back on, I'm sorry, this is a long-winded non-question, but I think an important statement, to fall back on the, well, we don't know and we're not sure. Sometimes I think we have to put that stuff in the forefront to make happen and put forward the people that have been devastated and are living through, excuse my language, hell and don't see a future. And I, as an individual, can't sit by and take the chance that someone may not be with us or potentially have long-term damage and impact to themselves and their future families? Because we do not take action. So to my specific question is, is there a condition of a timeframe that you would seem acceptable to? To say that if we were to approve, moving forward with this project, that you would have an answer? Because again, I, I go back, this is, this is long-term stuff.
Chair, this is Michael Hopper. Just to be clear, the, the, the issue before you is if you want to delete these two conditions, there, there's not, there's not another, you know, condition being considered or things like that. That's what your, your question is to you. If you would delete the two conditions as referenced. And so we're, I, I'm not sure what we're talking about further project approvals. I mean, the project has, at least through zoning, got its approval. The request is to delete two of the conditions of approval. And to the extent you need to ask these questions to determine whether you would or would not like to delete the conditions or recommend that the council delete them, then certainly that's fine. But there, there's not an overall project approval being considered today by the Commissioners. And I just wanted to make that clear. The issue is whether to delete these two conditions as proposed by the resolution sent down from council. So I just wanted to sort of help clarify that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopper. Follow-up question to that, but is it within our purview to, instead of recommending, like, removal of the condition, could we instead recommend an amendment to the condition?
I mean, not, I, I don't know, I don't really think so in this case. I mean, the question is to delete it or not delete it. I'm not sure what amendment you're, you're considering in this situation. I mean, there, there's, if it's, I, I'm sort of confused with, with the amendment would be and, and what you'd be looking at here.
Well, just thinking through what Commissioner Ward is bringing up, it sounds like if I, if I understand where he's going with his line of questions is that, you know, in terms of trying to find a solution here that I think meets the intent of the laws that are in place while also trying to get this project moving forward so that people can get back into housing is, you know, trying, trying to thread the needle and trying to shape this condition in a way that, you know, meets everybody's needs. The project can go forward with their infrastructure, Sea Worm, Department of Water Supply, DOH, whatever their requirements are with what their water is. Like, he's trying to find a solution by changing this condition instead of deleting it.
Well, the purpose in the code to put conditions on a project are to mitigate project impacts. That's what the conditions do. So I'm not sure what alternative mitigation you would have here to the impact the project is having that would be different. I mean, you're, you're being asked to delete the condition, which means that condition is not being there to mitigate the impact that the project will have on the water supply. So I'm not sure by adding a condition that, how that would do with the accomplished goal is. Because the conditions, again, are to mitigate project impacts.
Sure, but he's not, he's not talking about adding a condition. He's talking about modifying this condition number two. That is the subject of this discussion.
So deleting it, okay, I, I, I don't, you can recommend whatever you'd like to recommend, but my, my, what I'm saying is that these are, the conditions are to mitigate project impacts. So, you know, go ahead and make the recommendation you want to make. But I don't see how having a condition versus not having a condition would make the project go easier. Because these are supposed to mitigate those impacts. But if you want to make a different recommendation, it's certainly up to you to make that recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Lindsay.
To, on that, it is absolutely an impact not having enough water. So I, I am on Commissioner Ward's track with editing this condition also. So is there a way that you can make it okay for us to be able to edit this condition? Because if the only choice is our approval or denial, then that isn't fair to the project and what's going on and our community.
What, what, what is the, is there a proposal? If you want to have a proposal to amend the condition, you can certainly make that, that proposal. I'm not sure what the intent is, though. It, it sounded like the intent was to have the project be able to move forward. And the condition is, i- is potentially, you know, the obstacle. But if, if you've got a different idea, then please propose an alternative that perhaps still, because the condition, the wording of the condition is that the, the, the water source, that, that be provided by the developer. And, and so if, if you're, if you think that's a way to modify that, that would, you know, you can certainly propose that, but I, I'm, I don't have much, many thoughts on that. So it sounds like you guys have ideas on that, though.
Yes, I think Commissioner Ward was trying to get at some kind of modification. Commissioner Hippolito?
Chair, can I make a motion to have an executive session?
Um, sure.
Chair, I don't really see anything that I would be advising you here that would be, if, if you have a question that would be, I think my response would be, you know, confidential and needed to be not public. I can suggest that, but to date, I don't think we've said anything or I don't anticipate necessarily saying anything that I couldn't, you know, advise the public. But I mean, if there's questions that are, are problematic, I can certainly let you know that I think we need that session.
I have a, Mr. Hopper, I have a process question that I think it's technical.
I think that's fine, yes.
Yes, in executive session.
Okay, Commissioner Lindsay, were you going to add to that?
No, I just was thinking possibly the, I'm not sure what Mr. Hippolito's plans are, but I'm wondering if the applicant or whatever they're, they are in this case, has, has an opinion on this or is that, is it time for that?
Sorry, an opinion on which part are you asking?
The amending, amending the condition.
Well, I don't know that we have a specific amendment yet to discuss. I think he was just starting to get at the possibility of proposing it.
If you need a second for the executive session, I am the second.
Okay, um, all right, so, um, yes, let us go forward with that. Is that language? Um, all right, so it sounds like Commissioner Hippolito is making a motion to go into executive session to call, consult with our attorney on our duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities pursuant to section 92 dash 5A4 HRS.
That's correct, Chair.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I see everybody raising their hand, aye. Okay, we will go into executive session. Steph, can you send a link out, please? And we'll see you folks on that link. And everybody else, we will be back as soon as we can. Good late morning, everybody. Welcome back to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2024. We are just out of executive session and I believe Mr. Hopper is required to give a brief synopsis of what was discussed. Mr. Hopper, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I obviously can't discuss everything that was discussed in executive session, but I think I generally have to say that the topics that were discussed were that sort of the commission's options with respect to its recommendation on this resolution, potentially amendments to the, whether there was an ability to amend the resolution. And then the, the commission's timetable for, for decision-making. Other than that, there was no deliberation or decision-making certainly made. And so that's what can be up next for the commission. But I wanted to have that clarified, that's the sunshine law requirement to, to give that explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper. Um, okay, so before we went into an executive session, we were on Commissioner Ward thinking about possible amendment to this condition. Would you like to pick up where we left off?
That's going to require that I remember what. Yeah, thank you, Chair. I guess my thought is, is there a way that we can help the project move forward without jeopardizing, understanding and mitigating the risks? And so that's where kind of my thought process was, is that, is there something we could put in place that we're saying, such as, and I'm not necessarily making a motion, I'm kind of throwing it out, would be around within a certain timeframe, getting approvals, but in the short term, they could proceed with starting the infrastructure, but if they don't receive approvals within X timeline, then potentially that ceases. But again, I'm not sure if that's something that we can actually put in place, but that was the thought process that I was having of, how do we help our community while still mitigating and understanding what, what we don't know at the moment? So.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I think on this note, I have a question for Director Stufelbein, if he is still on with us. Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for bearing with us. So, you know, you've been hearing everything that's been going on and I'm pretty sure you're apprised of, you know, what the council discussion was on this. My question is, you know, thinking about what Commissioner Ward was saying about being, having some degree of creativity here and understanding from corp counsel that we still need to mitigate for impacts of this project. Like, from your end, what would, could be the quickest path forward for this project to be able to move in the interest of getting people back into homes? But needing certain approvals in order to get there? And understand we're on a time crunch dealing with people's, like, lives? You know, what can be done to get them moving forward as fast as possible?
Well, I'm not sure. So, I mean, to me, the fastest path forward is to work with Sea Worm to get decisions on potential new well use, well permits or surface water permits. And we're doing that. That, you know, I, I don't see a path that allows us to move forward until we know that there's adequate supply of water. So from our, our perspective, our approval would be, would be hinging on assurance that there is adequate supply, which changes on Sea Worm moving ahead on permit, permit application.
Okay, and, you know, the hearing, some of the suggestions that have been brought up by Commissioners and council members, like, is there a way to perhaps amend this condition that would allow for some kind of concurrent processing or installation of infrastructure, anything that can be done to kind of like gain efficiencies in the construction and approval timeline?
I think that's a question more that should go to probably the applicant in terms of what kind of risk they're willing to take. And potentially the, the people who approve the billing permits, you know. So that's really, I think the question that should be addressed to others.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that in a second. Commissioner Lindsay?
On that line, Director, is, isn't this project approved through West Maui? Sorry, Maui Land and Pine? They have water through Maui Land and Pine? Is that not part of the Sea Worm thing?
So my reading of the, of the letter from Maui Land and Pine was that there would be surface water made available, but that hinges on the state making it available from Hanukkah Stream and still meeting in the interim and stream flow standard. So if you talk about surface water, they would have to first meet the requirements that, of the in-stream flow standards. And then, you know, there's no guarantee that there will be additional water available after additional users that would be available for the project. So, and in terms of the well, again, the specific approval from Hawaii Water Services talked about it, conditioned on getting approval, a permit from the state. So I believe both of those still hinge on approval from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, further questions for the Director at this juncture?
Thanks, Director. Would it be possible for the, to, if we eliminated this condition and left it on for, so phase one would be unconditioned and can go forward, and then the condition can be applied for the later phases? Would that be an issue for the Water Department?
I mean, phase one is still, requires additional water, so I think it's still the same question. There, there's no, there's no additional water really at all. So whether the project is large or small, I think it's still the same situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. I will pose my question now to the applicant's representative. Same question I asked the Director about some sort of modification to this condition to allow for some degree of concurrent processing or development of infrastructure in the meantime.
Thank you for the question. So, I think that the Director has made it clear that they have no opposition to deleting the condition entirely. But if this commission would like to, we can provide a amended commission or amended condition to you folks for your review.
Yeah, so, you know, per our guidance from Corp Council and, you know, their original intent of the condition, it was put in to mitigate impacts. So we'll have to keep that in mind, that we're still gonna need to have some degree of impact mitigation. So yes, please go ahead. Should we distribute?
Okay. And one other item that could be discussed with D W S is that with the water delivery agreement from Maui Land and Pine regarding the surface water, the water delivery agreement specifically states that the, the water needed for the project could be provided to Department of Water Supply, and then Department of Water Supply has the option to provide service to the project. And the water delivery agreement also states that, that there is a priority of use for that water. And so currently, there is water taken by M L P out of the ditch and provided to Kapalua for, for luxury landscaping and golf courses. And it clearly states in the water delivery agreement that priority goes to this project and to Department of Water Supply for the water. And so, M L P can at any time provide water to the D W S for its use and for, for this project. And so, I just want to make it clear that this project is not in any way a competition for the rebuild of Lahaina. In fact, we are trying to keep our water resources under public control and offer to D W S to, to provide source to them, and then they would provide service to the project. And so that is also an option, but in no way are we asking for their current uses of water to be in competition with the project.
Okay. So this handout is a, just for the record, proposed amendment to condition two that you've given us?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we need to make sure we get this to our commissioners who are online before we can talk about it. You guys both got it? Oh, no, not yet, waiting. Okay, okay. Oh, Commissioner Lindsay?
Just a question on that comment by Ms. Nishiki. So in the event that Maui Land and Pine reprioritizes their water use, does the luxury homes and golf course, like, get cut off, or what happens there?
So, Maui Land and Pine has three wells. Kapalua one and two are being utilized, and well number three is not being utilized. And Maui Land and Pine has told the commission and ourselves and likely D W S that that well number three can serve all of the uses for Kapalua. That's what it's actually reserved for. And actually, even currently, Maui Land and Pine, in times of drought, pumps water from their wells into the reservoirs. So they don't actually need to use the Honocohou ditch water. I, I would guess that the reason why ditch water is used versus pumping a well is the cost of it. And so, but they absolutely do have a use of wells to replace any ditch water.
So they will continue service and they have additional water, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kaila, did you raise your hand?
Okay.
Commissioner Hippolito?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, Commissioner Hippolito, go ahead.
Thank you. A question for Ms. Nishiki. Ms. Nishiki, I will ask you the same question I asked Councilwoman Alton. That two hundred forty rentals are long-term rentals?
Yeah, yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. And the balance of, well, the balance and all the four hundred affordable homes is, will be hundred percent affordable?
There, there are four hundred affordable?
Yes.
Three hundred of the, of those four hundred are rentals?
Yes.
And one hundred is for sale.
For sale, and that would be affordable, hundred percent affordable, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And then the remaining four hundred units that are currently market are able to be negotiated with the county to switch to affordable with county partnership in the Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay, thank you. And so, just to clarify, that would be the four hundred market homes that you are in negotiating with the county and administering to see if those homes could also be affordable. Is that correct?
Yes, and it'll be done on a phased approach. So we will, we will complete phase one, and then we'll talk with the county about phase two. And if something can be worked out, then those, then we can continue through all five phases.
Okay. I have a question regarding the development of Pulelehua. I asked Director Stufflebean this question about fire system. What is your development plan's full fire system at this, at this point? Would that be municipal water, or would that be something with storage tanks to support fire suppression system for your, your homes being built there?
So, the project has two reservoirs, Reservoir seventeen and Reservoir one forty, which, let's see, the storage capacity, so Reservoir seventeen has a five million gallon storage capacity, and Reservoir one forty has a seventeen million gallon approximate storage capacity. So, those could be utilized in the future, but at this time, fire protection will be through storage tanks from the water system.
And?
The wells.
Oh, and that would be M L P storage system or county storage system?
The storage tanks would be on, on site of the project. And so those would be the project's storage facility. The reservoirs that I spoke about are in the process of being transferred from M L P to the project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nishiki.
Thank you.
Is this handout still being transmitted to the commissioners? Okay, still going. Commissioner Lindsay?
This is for the applicant. You mentioned that there will not be any short-term rentals or B and Bs allowed. Is that an HOA deal, or is that the developer, like, promise? How are you, how are you sealing that for perpetuity?
Absolutely. That is a very important condition, and it is recorded in, at the Land Use Commission as part of the decision and order, and also in a settlement agreement, and it is required to be a deed restriction.
Thank you for that. One more question. One of the testifiers were saying that the developer, they were having a hard time getting a prevailing wage from the developer. Did you have any comments on that, about that process, or was there a reason?
Sure. So there was no complaint before the D L I R, which is Department of Labor and Industrial Relations regarding prevailing wage. But rather than continue to debate the question of whether only a portion of the grading and site preparation was a construction of public work and in an effort to ensure that there were no unnecessary delays to support and facilitate critically needed affordable rental housing for the people of Lahaina, the housing provider opted to just determine the difference between the wages already paid and the applicable prevailing wage and to pay that to the contractor to pay to the employees.
So he's paying that difference out of pocket? You're, I mean?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. No more questions, Chair?
Sure, thank you. Staff is still working on getting this handout to you folks. Commissioners, any other questions in the meantime?
We could attempt to put it up on screen for you folks. Would that be helpful?
That's a start, yep.
Okay.
But I think we'll still need to get it
Yes.
to the commissioners and post it online.
Alternatively, we could also send it to their personal emails?
I don't think you can do that.
Okay. Just trying to help.
Can you share a screen? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Maybe make it a little? Chair. Okay, everybody can see this. It's being shared. This is the handout they gave to us here in person. Commissioner Hippolito, were you raising your hand?
No, I'm saying I can see it.
Oh, okay. Sorry, you're really small on our screen. And staff is, got the email and they're distributing it also. Okay, and posting it. But in the meantime, I think we can start talking about this. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I think that this condition helps address the concerns from the commission. Can you talk through your thoughts behind this? Okay, so, just adding on to the end of the commission, or end of the condition, provided that this condition two shall not preclude the project from availing itself of any exemption from the requirement of Maui County Code, Chapter fourteen point one-two, for which it qualifies under Maui County Code, Section fourteen point one-two point zero-three-zero. So that would be the exemption under two point nine-six. And then, in addition to that, receiving pursuant to the exemption, subdivision approval and civil permits for infrastructure construction. So utilizing the exemption, it could receive the following approvals.
Commissioner Lindsay?
And the condition?
And you feel like this can help, this will make you move forward quicker through D W S?
We believe so.
Okay.
But ultimately, it will be up to the, the various departments.
Okay, and this is within your ability to do for now? Just to move forward.
If you're asking if we're able to comply with the condition, yes.
Yes, perfect. Thank you. Sorry, that was confusing.
Commissioner Kaila? Oh, you're on mute.
Ah, Ms. Nishiki, do you, I remember you mentioned there are several potential water sources. Do you want to make that first, Maui Land and Pine more broad? Or is that, is calling out Maui Land and Pine, okay? The project will provide potable, I don't know.
Oh, the project was originally owned by Maui Land and Pine, and so the water delivery agreement came with the project, and so, yeah, it's, it's fine.
Okay.
Is Director Stufflebean still online?
Yeah, I'm here, yes.
Okay, having, I guess I would ask you for your thoughts on this amendment, proposed amendment from the applicant to condition two.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I have no objections to the amendment. I would like to mention one thing. There was mentioned that there were three wells that, that they have up in Kapalua. The third well has been drilled, but it's, it's not permitted. So it would also require, the third well would also require a new use permit, which has not been received. So want to mention that. But again, I have no objection to this, to this addition, to this amendment change.
Okay, thank you. Was there somebody up there that raised their hand online, or was that something else? Commissioner Hippolito, did you raise your hand? Okay. I think I want to just go back real fast to the applicant's presentation. You, I heard you say in your presentation to us and then even in your presentation to council that, like, addressing this condition, when you presented to council, you said it would help with the project's eligibility for building permits. And you told us today that this would be a potential tool to allow the project to move forward. Can you explain that further? Because it sounds like this is still not a guarantee.
That is, Chair, thank you for the question. That is because we don't ultimately make those decisions. We can only provide a path forward. But ultimately, we will be waiting on the various departments' approval.
Okay. So commissioners, thinking about potential ways forward. We have this suggested amendment to the condition. Do you have any questions or comments on this? Anything you would suggest changes to perhaps?
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Questions to the applicants? Kind of going on the lines that I was asking earlier, discussing earlier. Well, this does not preclude, sorry. At least I have. This obviously is not stating how you're attempting or potentially would attempt. Is it an assumption that we could assume that you would be looking at alternative methods versus just reservoirs or ditch or wells? Is that something that we could either include or have some kind of comfort that we're not going to rely just on the solutions that we may have currently? Because it may prove out that there isn't enough water. So I'm just trying to get a gauge where that level of commitment could be.
Thank you for the question. So ultimately, the decision on water will come from the Commission on Water Resource Management. And the sources that have been applied for are also, you know, like DWS said, you know, they also have well applications in. They also have surface water applications in. And so it stands to reason that Sea Worm wants to provide domestic water for, for their stated priorities, which one of them is housing and affordable housing specifically. We've met with them a number of times. And so if they were to not, or if they were to deny our well application, it seems that they would just not allow any wells to be utilized. And that doesn't seem unrealistic. So I think that the options that have been provided have been vetted and are not outside of what everyone else is applying for. So we don't anticipate that there, that there should be an issue with utilizing the wells or the surface water. So if there were, I mean, I think you asked DWS like, well, what are the options? What, what other options are there on the horizon? And I think the only other thing is, you know, really bringing down your use of potable water to, you know, just what you need for, you know, cooking and taking showers and these sorts of things. And, and the project is, is committed to reducing as much as we can the use of potable water through the use of R1. And so that is something that's really an important part. And so bringing down, bringing down the use and then putting forward additional source, adding additional source.
Thank you.
If I could just add too, Sea Worm did state to us that they support the project and that they would really like to see projects like this and other affordable housing, especially a hundred percent affordable phases like this, move forward. So we're pretty confident that we will get their approval when the time comes.
Thank you.
Director.
Maala Chair, I just, I thank you for allowing me to step out for another meeting briefly. Just as we're headed into a place where I think we're making a motion, I just, I want to understand, and maybe this group can talk a little bit about the solution, your, the problem you're trying to solve with amended language. The request from the, from the council was to consider removing these conditions. I just, I want to just bring back the commission to the idea of what is the problem you're trying to solve, to solve that wouldn't be solved by what was requested. So that's all.
Yeah, we talked through this a bit when you were out. So it's finding a balance between, you know, well, from when this condition was, was imposed to where we are now, there's been a bunch of things that have happened that have changed the landscape surrounding this project. And we understand that this condition was put in place to, like all conditions, to mitigate impacts. And in this case, impacts due to water source and service. And, you know, it's both thinking about providing for this project, but what it will do, what implications that water service for this project could have on all the other needs for water on the west side. And so I think there is some discomfort with removing the condition altogether. And so the next option that the commission is exploring, and I think the council was exploring this too, would be some kind of amendment to the condition. Because then you still have it in place to mitigate impacts to water source without taking it away altogether. Think commissioners, does that sum this up?
I would say yes.
Okay. I'm not sure if we're ready for a motion, but we could be, if anybody, Commissioner Hippolito.
Yeah, Chair, I have a, maybe a question for Mr. Hopper. You know, in this condition number two, it states Maui Land and Pine Company as it's written. But now we're talking about Maui Ocean View LP. By creating this condition as amended right now, what issues we face in the future? Because Maui Land and Pineapple Company Incorporated is listed there versus Ocean View LP.
Chair, the, the conditions are made applicable. They're recorded on the land, and so they run with the land. So anyone else who purchases the property will still be subject to these. If these conditions are amended, in fact, the current landowner will have to sign a unilateral agreement, essentially reaffirming that the conditions are, that they run with the land and will have to authorize recording that agreement. So I don't think it's an issue that references that because the ordinance as a whole, as well as the unilateral agreement that runs with the land specify that it, it applies to the successors and assigns. And so I, I don't think that that's a problem in this situation because basically anyone who owns the property in the future has to abide by those conditions. In this case, since it's a zoning condition, it's not specific to the property, to the owner at the time it was applied for. I hope that makes sense, but it's going to run with the land. So I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hopper. Some more questions, Chair?
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? If there is no further questions, I don't think we have a recommendation from the department. And so it's up to the commission. We can make an, we can, as advised by Mr. Hopper, we can take any action we see fit. It could be a recommendation for removing the condition. And, you know, I think we're solely talking about condition two, not the other one about the parks. I think that one is okay to stay, from what I hear from everybody. So yes, just on this condition two, we can approve the, recommend approval for removing the condition. We can deny that, or we can take some other action, which could be suggesting an amended condition. Or I think we can just provide comments. Vice Chair.
Thanks, Cheryl. I'm tempted to do this. I'd like to make a motion that we eliminate condition two out of the app and replace it with the condition provided by the applicant.
If I may suggest, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it would be more so recommending an amendment to the existing condition two.
Okay, so it stays in.
Okay, okay. So moved by Vice Chair Thompson and the second.
And then Chair.
Oh, yes.
Chair, just as a non-substantive issue, if you replace the dashes with dots, I believe, for the section references, I think that would be correct rather than dashes because it's a county code reference. It's non-substantive, we could probably make that anyway, but I would just want that clarified for the record if that's the amendment that you want to add.
Would you be okay with that?
Yes, please.
And the second, okay with that too? Okay, captured within the motion. So discussion by the move on.
Well, it's a much-needed project. But so is water. And I think this accomplishes what we need to get to. And hopefully, it's two years out. And by then, Sea Worm and maybe the Water Department won't catch up to this. It's, you know, I know we do need to develop more in there. We have one of the wettest spots in the country. And we have a fairly small population of West Maui. Maybe it's fifteen, twenty thousand people maximum. So we should be able to provide this.
Discussion from the second.
I, I think I said a lot before, so I'll keep it short. I think we have an obligation to our community. And it's trying to find that, that balance. And despite it being two years out, it does provide its time. And if we can't figure that out in two years, then I think we've got bigger problems. So I think it's the right thing to do for, to our, to our honor.
Thank you. Further discussion from the commission? Commissioner Kailua.
Yeah, so to build off of Vice Chair Thompson's comments, we do have water, we have water. But I think it's just my two cents that it's bait being stolen. And so, you know, when a, a project comes forward that's prioritizing affordable and prioritizing Kapuna and prioritizing people from this place that's not stealing anymore. And so, yeah, I would be supporting anything that would help a project like that move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Kailua. Any further discussion from the other commissioners? Commissioner Hippolito.
Thank you, Chair. You know, we heard from initiator of this resolution, this bill, and also from the applicant, that it's going to be a hundred percent affordable, even looking at the future of even market homes being affordable. That's really critical. You know, we can look at everything from infrastructure and getting all of that set up. But having the commitment is most important, that they're willing to provide a hundred percent affordable homes in phases. First phase, even long-term rentals. That's also critical. And as far as is amended to number two, it's something that they can start moving forward. There's a lot, we heard from the director saying that they're working a lot of initiatives. Hearing from the applicant, they got a couple reservoirs, seventeen and one forty, you know, with potential to support the fire systems, which is really important, that takes the burden off DWS. So I think our discussions today was very fruitful for this project, for the community. Therefore, I'm going to support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Hippolito. I do want to make a note because I think the, and maybe Mr. Hopper, if you could chime in. So the proposal from council to us was repealing condition two and condition fifteen. But I don't think we are talking about repealing condition fifteen. So can we, and I guess this is up to the move on in the second also, but not recommend, and I don't know if this is two separate motions maybe, but not recommending removal of condition fifteen. And so right now, we're taking care of.
Keeping fifteen as is?
Yeah, keeping fifteen in the ordinance. Because. Separately? Because we're just talking about condition two for this motion?
If you anticipate a lot of debate on condition two, then yeah, maybe you can keep it separately. Someone can make a motion to amend, to add in that condition fifteen will be, they recommend to not delete that and have a second and have that added. So you could do that too. And.
As a friendly amendment to the motion?
Yeah, or just as an amendment. And then you can vote on it. That's, that's fine. Hopefully, if there's, if that's non-controversial, that can happen relatively quickly.
Okay. Commissioners, somebody to propose a amendment to the motion?
Chair, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Hippolito, raise his hand.
Go for it.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Chair, I want to make a friendly amendment, a motion to, what is that wording again?
It would be.
Condition fifteen.
Deny the removal of condition fifteen.
We deny the removal of condition fifteen.
Okay, is there a second to this amendment? Second from Commissioner Lindsay. With balloons. Okay, do you want to discuss this motion, Commissioner Hippolito?
No discussion, no comments.
Okay, Commissioner Lindsay? Okay, let us vote on this amendment. Director? Commissioner Hippolito.
Aye.
Commissioner Kailua.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Chair, there, that's five votes. Five votes, motion carries. Okay, so back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Singan, I think we fleshed a lot of this out during our discussion all morning. So let us call for the vote, Director. Commissioner Hippolito.
Aye.
Commissioner Kailua.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Chair, that's five votes in favor. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. That is the end of item B one. Now we will go into our training. Commissioners, do you need a couple of minutes? Bio break?
Bio break.
Okay, let us do, it's like seven minutes or something, we'll come back. Good noon to everybody. We are returning to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, December ten, two thousand and twenty-four. And we are going into items C one through C five on our agenda, orientation workshop.
Director?
Say a couple of words to start. So today, this is the second half of your orientation. We're going to dive deeply, pun intended, into special management area and shorelines, coastal zone management. Then we're going to get into our general plan and community plans. The Plan Implementation Division will be here to talk. And then we are going to end the day with the Department of O E V Resources, who will help with that, explaining what their department does and how we can intersect more with them. So I'm, now I'm going to turn it over to Jim, who will take us on the first leg of our journey.
Chair, this is Michael Hopper. We do need to take public testimony on this item.
Okay. Let us do that now.
Okay, first testifier would be.
Okay, uh, first testifier would be Barack Lob to be followed by Johan Law.
Hello, can you see me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, my name is Barack and, uh, I want to say first, I really appreciate all of you being here. I know it's a lot of work and, um, you're not getting paid. So my confusion, we have, um, a home or had a home on Front Street that was lost in the fire. And, uh, according to our architect, we were going to go from like a thirteen hundred and thirteen square foot, uh, home to, uh, basically like five hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, as I read over, uh, this and it looks like the minimal buildable lot may actually go from forty feet from the fifteen-foot setback. So I'd love to have that clarified, uh, that that's actually what it's, it's going to be. So we don't end up with like a, a single bedroom home. Um, similarly, I, I had a question on, uh, what was going to constitute an SMA. So we're likely to have to build up like eight feet, um, because of the water setback line or the, the setback. And in that case, if we were six hundred square feet, we'd want to build, you know, like two stories, but then being under thirty feet, we might not be able to. So that would sort of restrict us. Uh, and I didn't know if there was any plan for that for, for other homes and how that was going to be resolved. And then my third main thing was, you know, we would hope to get, uh, a minor SMA. But if we were able to build, you know, a thousand square feet, that's only five hundred dollars a square foot. And if we do have to build up, it's going to be on pilings and poles. And I didn't know all of that was going to have to be accounted for, if there's some sort of square footage that, you know, would be able to rebuild and not have to worry about all of the additional costs that are going to happen, you know, surge pricing. And, um, I guess finally, you know, if we do a major SMA, which it looks like is what would have to do, even if we're only building, you know, six hundred square feet with the, the current costs, what you would want from us or what would be the criteria to make sure that, okay, you know, we're going to go through all these major processes to rebuild a home. And I know it's, you know, the times were different as from the thirties, but to rebuild our, our home that we've had for, you know, twenty, thirty years, thirty, seven years, um, what it is you'd want to see to make sure that we got through the process, you know, and we're not going through it for years. And, um, thank you very much.
Hmm, uh, sure. Thank you for the question. I don't know that we are able to answer that today. We're not proposing any changes to anything with what we have on our agenda. We're, we are, um, having a learning day workshop from the department and they're going to explain all of this to us, which maybe it would be helpful you to sit down on this, but I think, Director, correct me if I'm wrong, this would, um, to answer your questions, I think would take, um, probably a one-on-one with the department, but go ahead, Director.
Yes, correct. So we have been meeting one-on-one with the, with shoreline property owners. And so if, if Mr. Lob has not had a chance to had a, have a conversation, we encourage you to go on to the website. Just search, um, Maui shoreline rules and there is, there's a way, uh, through Maui recovers, there's a way to get, actually we'll put the link in the chat. How about that? We'll put the link in the chat for a way to you get, get a one-on-one, because every, as you'll hear during this conversation today, every property is different. And so while we're giving an overall training, every individual property has different circumstances, which makes your setbacks different, which changes things. So if you've met one-on-one with the department, those are the things that you need to consider. This is a greater conversation about like the overview. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, I, I guess my main part was, uh, the forty-foot setback that you're going to cover uh, during this training that I looked at. That's where my, my real confusion was, um, if that forty-foot uh, setback or the forty-foot minimum buildable lot is going to be able to go into, uh, not only this setback, but the previous setback, or if we would be restricted to be at a minimum forty feet from the ocean. And that's something that I've, I've kind of heard both ways. Um, and I'm hoping will be clarified during this training and I'll be here. Thank you also, Director, for putting it on.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you. I don't, I don't know that anybody has any questions for the testifier. Um, and we can't really do, we're not equipped to do question and answer in the testimony time. But yeah, hopefully listening to this presentation will help you out. And then any follow-up questions, I think the dir- department will probably be looking out for, uh, requests from you for a further consultation. Yep, okay, I see nodding from Planner Jim Bukka.
Next person to testify is Johan Law to be followed by Tom Crowley.
Hello, uh, Johan Law testifying on behalf of myself. And, um, so last time I brought up some questions that, um, I thought you guys should ask, um, but it turned out the SMA and shoreline would be on this meeting. So, uh, I think you guys should ask the planning department about the SMA rules and why they were struck down and specifically why they were deemed illegal by the judge. Um, and that's going to go into like constitutional issues and the nature of regulation itself and what your guys' whole job is. So I think that's actually a really important thing to, to understand. Um, the second thing, uh, I think you guys should ask about native Hawaiian law training. Um, I thought that was required for boards and commissions, but I'm not sure that's the case. But I do remember that when I took it, Commissioner Decost was on mine as along with Brian Billbury. Um, I think that's also a good thing to help with understanding your obligations and I guess all of our obligations in in government. Um, I'm not sure if the Department of O E V Resources is here, because I don't see it on the screen right now for the PowerPoint, but if they're there, um, I think you guys should ask about something that came up last time, which is whether you are allowed or whether you should consider impacts besides what is on a application. Um, because my understanding is that, uh, for pretty much anything, you have to consider impacts to native Hawaiians and also public trust resources. And I think the O E V Resources Department would be the one to address that. And often developers will present it as, well, Shipti has reviewed this, so you guys don't have to worry about the cultural resources, the E V, any of that. And so that would be a good thing to get clarification on, uh, especially where it applies with coastal zone management law, um, and also general regulation and public trust resources. And, um, that is all my suggestions. I do, uh, I'm kind of nostalgic for Kelly Polly, because, uh, she would always ask the questions I suggested, but, um, those were, those were good times. So anyway, mahalo.
Uh, thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Um, I guess I have a question. So, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Lindsay.
Just a comment. I think we had the Native Hawaiian law training and it was excellent and helpful, so helpful. Thank you.
Um, yeah, were you not aware, question for the testifier, that we are required to take that as being commissioners?
Um, that, that was my understanding, but then I think a lot of the discussion and decisions made by the planning commission, as well as other boards, have made me think that maybe that wasn't required, um, because I think a lot of things will get missed in, in your decision-making when it applies to like native Hawaiians and public trust resources and things like that. So it's, it's good that it's required, but, uh, maybe refreshers would be good.
Um, yes, it is required. And, you know, I just want to say, Mr. Law, you, you're very active in our commission meetings, which is, you know, nice to see from residents and being a South Maui resident and being that we're going through this community plan, you know, you might be somebody who would think about putting in an application to sit on this body and be involved in this way. That would be another way for you to get your questions asked and your voice heard. Um, and you know, be more involved on the commission in a decision-making capacity. Uh, any other questions for the testifier? Okay, Singan, thank you again.
Okay, next testifier is Tom Crowley to be followed by Councilmember Paulten.
Hello, I'm planning commission, Tom Crowley. Um, just tagging in on the last two testifiers' comments. Um, I, I look forward to this training. I hope that I learned some things. I've reviewed the slides and so forth. A lot of people ask me, you know, what can we do? And I try to have answers for them that make sense. And, uh, I followed all of, uh, the, the, uh, work that this, uh, commission did to create the new shoreline rules, which were, you know, uh, rejected by the court. And as Johan said, I'd be interested to know exactly what the issues were there. But, um, as the director said, uh, each of these properties along the shoreline is unique. And having things in here like five hundred thousand dollars sends it to the planning commission. And I, I look at that and I say, why? Uh, and, and what is it that, that, that you guys are going to decide on whether a single-family home is allowed to be rebuilt where it was? So I hope that I come out of this, this training with a better understanding of what this commission is going to consider when these SMA majors come before you for a single-family home, as Mr. Lob said. Um, we're trying to build, build back our family home, but the current rules, um, end up making it less than a six hundred square foot, uh, buildable area. So are you going to have authority to expand that for them? Should they be going down the road of, of, uh, the varying zoning variances in order to, uh, uh, create buildable, uh, situation? And understand this, what's unique right now today is, of course, what happened in Lahaina. We have all these homes that were destroyed through no fault of the owners of these homes. These homes were destroyed based on the fault of others who I would think each of these owners has an action against. So when we say to them, well, the new rules are you can't rebuild what you once had. That creates, I think, a liability both on the part of the county and, and everyone else to say, well, why, why did what you have, you know, why is it gone? So I hope that number one, there will be some new rules, which we were promised for the burn area and, and, you know, where those stand. And number two, for the people who are anxious to rebuild, and everyone I've talked to is anxious to rebuild right now, um, what they need to prepare in order to get
Thirty seconds.
And, uh, and, and, and have their single-family homes approved for an SMA major. Just, I, again, I hope to learn those things today and I hope, uh, that you ask questions to, to ferret out those answers. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Okay, Singan, mahalo again.
Next testifier is Councilmember Paulten.
Aloha, Mai Kaku. Sorry about that.
No worries. Welcome back.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to perspective, I really wanted to thank all of you. I'm kind of glad that I don't have authority for the management area because it is really difficult. Um, I come from, uh, career in ocean safety, over twenty years of watching the ocean. And I just wanted to mention that it's not slow, steady rise of the ocean that you need to be concerned about. Um, it's at coupled with, uh, you know, storm surge from hurricanes, uh, full moon high tide. It's the one-time catastrophic events. And, you know, I know there's things like captive insurance where people can get their own private insurance, but, um, I was told by someone when I said I didn't really want to get into this kind of a controversial fight that, um, it affects our entire community when a catastrophe like this occurs. When a whole town burns down or where, when an entire shoreline, shorefront, um, gets inundated by storm surge and it's left to all of us to survive through that. Um, I don't have the answers, but, um, for me personally in my work, I, I try to prioritize owner occupants, people trying to get back to their family homes, but not those necessarily trying to make a profit through short-term rentals or other things. I know that we need, um, commercial activity, but, um, I think that we need to be very careful, because if this commercial activity is being threatened in twenty years, ten years or less, then, um, we should put it in an area that it's going to continue on indefinitely, because otherwise we'll continually be, um, responding to crises. Um, there is also the ground level, ground level rise, water rise that occurs with sea level rise. And, um, I think that Dr. Chip Fletcher has mentioned that areas that were once wetlands and like that will return as a part of sea level rise. And I imagine that includes Loko Omoku Hinia, Moku Ula and like that, um, five oh five underground parking garage has always needed to be pumped out of water and that continues to this day. And that kind of development is, um, it's just not sustainable anymore. To Mr. Crowley's point, um, I think that five hundred thousand amount or threshold for SMA major that hasn't been updated in a long time. And just from August seventh, twenty twenty-three to August eighth, twenty twenty-three, construction price, um, prices have risen considerably so that, um, you know, I be supportive of moving that five hundred thousand up, but I don't think it's in your purview. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Any questions, commissioners, for the testifier? Okay, Singan, uh, we'll take a note of that last little bit for future.
Okay, thank you, Chair. There's no one else signed up.
Okay.
In person.
Oh, looks like we have somebody signing up in the gallery. Yes, come ahead.
Aloha, Kainashiki testifying on my own behalf. And I am very thankful to have, uh, these folks here to present and provide, um, education. Um, I really feel that this should be done, um, within, within our community as well. Uh, because there's been a lot of changes to the shoreline and SMA rules, I think that it would be really helpful, uh, for the general pub, public to get a better understanding is, and especially with what's going on in Lahaina, that the planning department, um, put together real, um, real-life scenarios, illustrations in, in Lahaina that show like, hey, this is what's allowed and this is what's not. I think that for the general public to be pointed at like, hey, if you want to understand the shoreline and SMA rules, just go read them. That doesn't, that doesn't really help, uh, you know. I, I've read them and I still have a hard time understanding them. Uh, so I would urge, um, the commission, uh, to urge the planning department to do a little bit more outreach on the shoreline and SMA rules, uh, and how those relate in real life um, circumstances. And, uh, I have always advocated for retiring infrastructure uh, in areas that are within the sea level rise exposure area. And I think that it is a mistake to, um, say in Lahaina, look, everything that's behind a seawall, that's it's not going to be affected at all by sea level rise. That's absolute, absolutely a ridiculous concept. All, you can just go and look at all of the seawalls along all of West Maui's, um, coastlines, and you will see huge sinkholes behind all of them. And this is only going to get, uh, worse. And so, uh, I think that, um, the planning department needs to take a very strong stance, um, that is, uh, not based on emotion, that is based on planning um, for our future generations and that while Lahaina burning down was a tragedy, it also presents a great opportunity to redesign the to, the town with coastal resiliency in mind. And I think it's a huge mistake to allow anything, anything to be rebuilt within the
Thirty seconds.
Rise exposure area. I have thirty seconds left or I'm done. Okay. Um, and, uh, so obviously I understand that the commission and the planning department don't have the ability to make that, um, make that happen. I, I definitely acknowledge that. Uh, but in the future, like is happening now, the decisions that are made by the county are going to come back to bite us. And I think that the county has a responsibility, um, to make decisions that will protect the future generations from ever having to decide if we put a seawall and destroy a beach to protect a hotel. So these are the decisions we're facing now. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for the test- Commissioners, any questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, mahalo again. Is there anybody else signed up to testify? Okay, last call for testimony on items C1 through C5 on our agenda. If you're online, please write your name in the chat. Otherwise, testimony will close in three, two, one. Okay, testimony is closed. You can go ahead with your presentation from staff.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, public who are here. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jim Buika. I am the Coastal Resource Planner in our Shoreline Working Group for the County Maui Planning Department. And we have a few presenters here today. We have, first of all, we have some virtual guest speakers from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in Oahu. Deb Mendez, Senior Planner, and Shi Chao Li, who have both a lot of experience, better around. They're going to begin with talking about the Coastal Zone Management Act itself. And then I will turn it over to Tara Owens to talk about some of the issues brought up of and give us an update on sea level rise and coastal erosion. And then I will address myself, the Special Management Area Rules for the Maui Planning Commission and our new shoreline rules for the Maui Planning Commission. Hopefully, we can cover some of these topics. And we'll start out right now with an offer to have Shi Chao Li and Deb Mendez share screen. So they're over there in Oahu. Just not to invoke our dear friend Kelly Polly, past Chair of the Planning Commission, but on her way out or her last year, her fifth year, she said, oh, Jim, after five years of listening to the Coastal Zone Management Training and the Special Management Area Training, I'm finally beginning to understand it. So it's, it's kind of, it is convoluted, it's difficult. And they're integrated Coastal Zone Management Program and the and the rules. So they refer back and forth. I'll try to cover that, but let's first have Deb begin with the the responsibilities of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development that actually pay my wage. So thank you, and I'll let them take it away. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear us okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Deborah Mendez. I'm a planner with the Coastal Zone Management Program. And I'm going to provide a little bit of background about the Coastal Zone Management Program. It originally started way back in 1969 with a report the federal government had determined that oh, sorry, thank you. Oh, it didn't go.
Sometimes there's a lag. There we go. Or you're on mute.
Hi again. As you can see in this timeline, it started out in 1969. The federal government has put together a committee called the Strathen Commission to report on the nation's coastline, our coastal zone. And they determined that the coast is roughly half of the nation's population and supports ecologically important habitats and natural resources. With this commission report called Our Nation and the Sea: A Plan for National Action, the National Coastal Zone Management Act of 1972 was developed. So the commission then developed the act. And the act was used to or identifies the preservation, protection, development, and where possible, to restore or enhance the resources of the nation's coastal zone for this and succeeding generations to achieve wise use of land and water resources in the coastal zone and giving full consideration to ecological, cultural, historic, aesthetic values as well as a need for compatible economic development. So the Coastal Zone Management Act is very distinct, is very different from other laws such as Clean Water Act or Clean Air Act in that it doesn't focus on environment alone. So the purpose of the CZMA is to promote a balance between beneficial use of the coast and including recreation and tourism, public access, coastal dependent industries and development as well as protection and conservation, restoration, enhancement of the coastal environments and resources. So then, let's see. In, as we move forward, in 1973, the statewide CCM program was developed with the Act, Enabling Act of Act 164 in 1973. And then in 1977, several years of planning and interaction, the Coastal Zone Management Statute was codified, and that's Chapter 205A or a revised statute. And then lastly, in 78, 1978, the US Department of Commerce officially approved the CCM program. So that's sort of just a background on it. Okay, I'm sorry. So this image just shows the, all the 35 coastal and Great Lakes states and territories with the exception of Alaska that participate in the National CCM Program. Okay, so let me see. I am just going to talk a little bit about the CCM Program, like I said, the very beginning, which is the CCM Law. And explaining a little bit about the Coastal Zone Management Program Laws, Part One, which is Objectives and Policies, Federal Consistency, and Marine and Coastal Zone Advocacy Council. And Shi Chao will take after that with Part Two and Part Three, the Special Management Area and Shoreline Setback. So the CCM Program has the regulatory responsibilities and our program initiatives. The regulatory responsibilities include federal consistency and the SMA permitting and shoreline setbacks, and the program initiatives such as Ocean Resources Management Plan, Coastal Hazards Initiatives, and Coastal Nonpoint Pollution Control Initiatives, and Marine and Coastal Advocacy Council. So let me see, just move forward. Two main perks of the CCM Program is federal consistency and funds, federal funds that come in. Federal consistency ensures that federal agencies are not acting independently or in conflict with the state's federal approved enforceable policies of the CCM as of the Coastal Zone Management Program. And their actions are clearly in compliance with the state's program. So federal consistency takes a look at federal agency activities such as the Navy doing something or National Park Service. Federal permits and licenses that are reviewed are things like the Army Corps of Engineers Permit and federal financial assistance such as FHWA funds coming into the county, things like that. And those are items, are federal activities that are reviewed within our office for federal consistency. The second perk of having a Coastal Zone Management Program is the receiving of funds. We receive approximately $2 million in federal funds annually. It supports the CCM Program, so the staff and our projects. It also helps to fund the administration, the county's administration of the SMA permit system. So these federal funds support between four and six staff in the counties each year. Let me see, just really quickly, the pursuit to 205A, Chapter 205A of the HRS, Hawaii's area, the coastal zone area encompasses the entire state. The CCM Law requires that all state and county agencies must comply and implement the CCM Programs, Objectives, and Policies, in particular, their long-term plans. The state and county land use policy and their laws and administrative rules must comply and implement objectives and policies. And you can see these objectives and policies there, recreational resources, historic resources, and et cetera. And so this matrix just helps to illustrate the two different matrices. Illustrate Hawaii's regulatory authority with the CCM's objectives and policies. So let's see, the CCM 205A is sort of an umbrella, overarching umbrella. And under, within that is the statutes, ordinances, rules, and actions and rules that must comply with and implement the, on the matrix of objectives and policies. Okay. So in 205A, Section Three, the lead agency has the following roles, and that is to receive and disperse the funds, provide support and assistance for the administration of the CCM Program as well as reviewing of, for federal consistency, advocating for the compliance of Chapter 205A and monitoring CCM-related enforcement activities of the state and county agencies. So the counties play a crucial role in implementing 205A and the CCM Program. And this shows just a spatial perspective of, that illustrates how the shoreline acts as a jurisdictional boundary between the state and the counties for the regulatory approvals. On the land side or the Mauna side of the shoreline, the counties are in charge of county managed land use districts, especially urban lands. And on the shoreline side, all of the area, the land area between the shoreline and the shoreline setback is shown in red there.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioner. My name is Tony, the planner of the OPSD. So right now I just talking about SMA and the shoreline setbacks as Deborah mentioned 205A. The part two is SMA, part three is shoreline setbacks. So from this diagram, this map, you can see already shoreline area is really sensitive area, most sensitive area. Minimum requirement is 40 feet after Act 16, 2020. But SMA is more than that, is from the shoreline to inland area. So you can see they have different part. This is SMA area in general, visualize to see what SMA looks like. So SMA is land extending inland from the shoreline or any area subject to senility intrusion or tide influence. As AG opinion 1975, SMA is coastal water related and shoreline related for SMA. But keep in mind, SMA is not based on the parcel boundary. So some parcel may be partial within SMA. So SMA is a regional concept instead of based on the parcel boundary. So this is a general statewide SMA looks like. You see Maui SMA area is the second largest part of island, of course, including Molokai, Lali, and Maui. Each county, they can amend their SMA boundary based on their initiative. But when contraction of SMA area, then had to go to OPSD, our office, for review and approval. For extension SMA area, county can make a decision. So we have talked about the purpose of SMA permit. Keep in mind, SMA permit start from 1975, from Act 176, before CCM Program approved by state and before approved by the federal. So people always say SMA role is a county home roles. The reason, because at the beginning, before CCM Program get approved, SMA purpose is tried to put interim control of development within area along the shoreline. So they have two major purpose in their time, is for management option purpose. Then the other way is adequate access to beach and regression area. So that this side map, the photograph, the picture you can see, SMA their time to try to make interim control of development along the shoreline area, along, within area along the shoreline. So after 1977, when CCM Program get approved by state and then 1978 approved by federal, SMA become a permanent feature of the CCM Program. This means not just only interim control, but become the part of the CCM Program, also really important part of the CCM Program. That's why we say county play really important role in implemented of the CCM Program. So SMA permit, you can see, is a false permit within SMA area. But we have to keep in mind, SMA permit is not land use policy. In fact, is permissible land use that already allowed by the state and county land use policy, like state land use commission and conservation district or DNR, border DNR, and also city council, county council regarding county zoning. These kind of land use policy, including general plan, community plan. So SMA permit is not land use policy. They cannot decide which area, which side be suitable for development. This is decided by land use policy. So in general speaking, SMA permits normally cannot prohibit development. Their purpose is require mitigation measures to mitigate impact from development on the SMA area. So the purpose of SMA permit is provide management tool to mitigate impact from development. Authority for SMA permit, you see, the county Hawaii is a planning commission. They have two planning commissions, One World and New World Planning Commissions. County Hawaii, Kawai have planning commission also, but Maui have three planning commissions. Maui Planning Commission, Molokai Planning Commission, Lali Planning Commission. Only city county Honolulu is the council is the authority. Because their planning commission is the only advice body, not the decision body. So this diagram, SMA permit procedures, I will emphasize, really important, even looks really simple, but really important. From diagram, you can see authority make a decision. Of course, planning director will be assigned. Of course, planning director will be assigned designated designated authority by planning commission. To make a determination regarding SME exemption and SME minor permit. So you can see this diagram, SME exemption is decided by planning director. Cannot be decided by proposal or developers. This means exemption also is a determination by planning director. Of course, SME minor definitely decide or issue by planning director. For SME major, then they had go to the procedures, go to the planning commission. The major difference for SME major is the requirement of public hearing. And also with testimony, public area, public testimony. Then their planning director give recommendation to planning commission for make a determination. So you see this kind of diagram, we emphasize. For each proposal in SME area, we have three types of determination. SME exemption, SME minor and SME major. Then we can decide within SME area, doesn't mean all action will be defined as a development. As the two oh five A session twenty two, some action may not development defined as a two oh five A session twenty two. So at the beginning we'll decide development or not development. That's why two oh five A section twenty two providing list. Twenty two right now, what kind of categories can be examined, potentially examined from SME permit? If no significant impact or make a authority or planning director decide on the list can be examined for SME permit. So for single family residency before twenty eleven. From nineteen seventy five to twenty eleven, thirty six years, all single family residency. Be examined from SME permit, no matter where they are located, no matter how large they are, all examined. But since twenty eleven, act one fifty three. Then if the size larger than seventy five hundred square feet floor area will trigger SME permit. Then act sixteen twenty twenty, if the location within shoreline parcel. Or parcel impacted by storm surge, high tide, erosion, all this kind of cost hazard will trigger SME permit also. So since twenty twenty act sixteen, then the single family residency location and size. Will decide the trigger SME permit or not. This picture I took twenty two thousand eight from HCPU conference, this from Maui. That time, this is examined from SME permit. Even this single family residency located with the shoreline area, it's a shoreline parcel. You see really close to beach area, but but that time is examined from SME permit. So then we have decide, had to decide SME use permit, just say SME major permit and SME minor permit. Here, the significant factor is the environment impact or ecological ecological effect. Take into account cumulative impact for development. If this significant impact will be triggered as main major. But as some people already testify regarding cost threshold between SME major permit and SME minor permit. Before twenty eleven, the cost threshold is a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. For more than twenty years, never change. Then from twenty eleven start, then threshold become five hundred thousand. Between SME major and minor, today is twenty twenty four, almost thirteen years already. People argue again, inflation or this kind of stress hold. Yes, true, but that time when twenty eleven change is threshold from a hundred twenty five thousand dollars become five hundred thousand dollars. They already not only concern the inflation, but also concern the streamline. That's why the double amount of hundred twenty five thousand dollars become five hundred thousand. Today, people will argue say we should increase the threshold again, make a minor major, this can stress hold increase. I don't against that, but to be honest, this kind of number always can be keep changes. Our office originally say remove this kind of cost threshold, but environment group and the public don't trust government say. We need a numerical numerical number to trigger as ma- major. Otherwise, we cannot have chance to provide testimony or trigger as public hearing. So that's a story. Then cumulative impact for SME permit very important, also really crucial. Because when we talk about cumulative impacts based on EAIS requirement also. Very few case they provide timeline, time temporary scope and special scope. If no special scope and the temporal scope, how to do cumulative impact assessment, almost impossible. That's why OPSD provide guidance to county planning department. To provide minimal requirement say, okay, special scope, we can consult SME boundary area. Temporal or timeline scope for past, current and the future, we can track back to five years and the future five years. With this kind of timeframe, we can assess cumulative impact at least. So this is a general minimum requirement for cumulative impact assessment. Based on two oh five A, CZM objective and policies criteria for the cumulative impact. Because SME cannot cover everything, that's why we have to be really careful, SME as cumulative impact. Different from EAIS. So we come back to CZM objectives and policies. SME permit conditions must be under the context of CZM objectives and policies. Otherwise, we don't have legal foundation for SME permit conditions. That's we emphasize here. So for example, I just give example number three. If we purely talking about SME condition regarding traffic only, that's not under the CZM objective. If the traffic is self-impact public access to beach area to regression area. Then they can become SME permit condition. Otherwise, traffic itself can be deal with by other regulation regulatory requirement. Instead of including land use policies, instead of by SME permit conditions. So I this example just try to emphasize the condition of SME permit. Must be under the context of CZM objectives and the policies and the SME guidelines. So this kind of condition just give some examples, like say, okay, maintain or provision of the public access to beach. And also preservation archaeological size and also production life and property from coast houses. And setbacks for all coastal views, including also like coastal waters and lighting. This all relates to CZM objectives and policies. There, of course, enforcement of SME permit conditions and the shoreline setbacks really important. With conditions must be enforceable, otherwise the condition become potential challenged by lawsuit. So. Chapter two oh five A gives a civil fines for ten thousand dollars per day potential. And a hundred thousand dollars per case for violation civil fines. Then I talk about the part three because time concerned. Part three totally different from part two. Part three, in fact, for shoreline setbacks, part three, in fact, is a land use policy. The reason we say that because part three shoreline setbacks originally come from chapter two oh five. Land use commission, act one thirty six nineteen seventy. Se- shoreline setbacks, this started really earlier, even earlier than SME permitted requirement. So nineteen eighty six, by act two oh five eight, they move from part from two oh five to part two oh two oh five A. For shoreline setbacks. So I again, I emphasize shoreline setbacks, part three of two oh five A is the land use law. Different from part two SME permits, which is not land use law. Then shoreline setbacks really, really important. The reason setback means prohibit any structure within shoreline area. As the diagram before we show, between shoreline and the setback line is the shoreline area. Within shoreline area should be prohibit any structure within shoreline area. That's the purpose of setbacks, of course, have hardship. That's why variance is exemption to prohibition. Varyance is not permit, different from SME permit. So variance normally really hard to get because exemption to prohibition. For new structure, shoreline setback is a really important, also really effective way. But for existing structure, much more challenging for shoreline setback. Because already there, also mostly is maybe non-conforming structure. That's why existing structure really challenging for CZM program, for counties. Planning department or planning commission also, they have accommodation approach and also protection approach. And finally, they have retreat approach to deal with this kind of existing structure. The picture here I talk from Maui, you see this picture also. Originally existing structure approach mostly protection and also accommodation. But some area may be no option, then have to be retrieved. Then we talk quickly about act sixteen. You already, we already mentioned act sixteen for single family residency right now, if location is shoreline parcel. They will trigger SME permit requirement. Then minimum requirement shoreline setback from twenty feet become forty feet. Of course, county be authorized by two oh five A for shoreline setback can be more than forty feet. For statewide, minimum requirement is forty feet, but county can be more than that. And of course, two oh five A after act sixteen provide definition of beach and also add solarize and the coast houses. Then the key part, act sixteen is a prohibit priv- 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 private shoreline hardening structure. In the beach area, so this is really key part to protect beaches. Before act sixteen twenty twenty, hardship mostly be applicable for variance. Application for shoreline hardening, because their time language favorite shoreline hardening. From hard, from variance, from hardship. That's why generally speaking, some owner can get a shoreline hardening structure, not say easily, but can be get a variance for shoreline hardening. But act sixteen just prohibit shoreline hardening in beach area for private shoreline hardening. Except if the interest of for general public can be granted variance. Oh, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Sorry, Commissioner Kailaha.
Um yeah, I have a couple of questions and thank you so much for being here today and presenting, taking the time to present to us. Um I have two questions and I hope, well. I wish that Commissioner DeCoste was here because he asks um this one specific question all the time, which starts to make me think. To about this this question and I know he would have asked this to you, but um. So the my planning commission is the authority in all matters related to the coastal zone management law. And that first slide that you brought up was defining the coastal zone management law or act. Although I'm not totally sure now what the differences between the coastal zone management act and coastal zone management law. Um but so does the coastal zone manage it? Like there's a term in there that says resources, protect, preserve resources. And I guess my question is like, what, how do you define those resources? And like, you know, this is, does the CZM tell us whether we should be prioritizing? Public resources over private property or vice versa, like does one prioritize over the other?
Good question.
That's a really good question. That's the tension between public trust resources and the private property rights. This kind of definitely really not only Hawaii situation. For example, for existing structure or within shoreline area. For example, for managing retreat program or this kind of approach. How to deal with this kind of tension between protection of public trust resources and the private property rights? That's why we have this kind of debate, but also for CZM program. We try to balance these both of side, that's why before act sixteen, shoreline has hardening structure be favorite. For private sector, protect their property. That's why environment group, public, general public argue said beach is a public trust resources. Shoreline is a public trust resources. Why we favorite private sector shoreline hardening only without protect public trust resources? So this kind of debate balance, we move the direction of CZM program. So act sixteen definitely we change this kind of direction for from the previous situation. That's why private shoreline hardening structure be prohibited for the time being. And this we give time, how to protect beach resources?
So the, so is it more of a balance between public and private? Okay, so the resources in that definition refers to public and private resources?
No, private resources normally is property rights. Probably, we don't say pa- private resources, we say public trust resources. First, public, a private property rights. Because some private property rights, because they are non-conforming structure. Before CZM pro- program take effect, like say before nineteen seventies or before nineteen seventy five or even nineteen seventy seven, they are already there. So this is this kind of tension happen. For shoreline setback easily for new development, for new structure, for existing existing structure, really, really challenging.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. Um I have one more question. Um you had mentioned the, there were like certain conditions. They are like, these are questionable conditions. Um and one of those conditions had energy conservation conditions, which has come up before. Multiple times in our meetings and I in my head had always justified it like, well, energy. Is one of the major causes, is the major cause of global climate change, which is the major cause of most of the issues that we have in the ocean. So of course we could put conditions on energy because that would mitigate impacts to all ocean public resources. Um. Are you saying that that's not enough?
Okay, yes, I I I thank you for raise up this kind of example, definitely this example from Maui, based on our review. I know energy conservation definitely is really good policy for environment situation. Based on two oh five A, CZM objective policies, we have ten objectives and also supporting policies. We don't have direct, direct relationship for this kind of situation requirement, like air pollution, right? For environmental assessment definitely is true. For SME permit condition will be challenging if people go to lawsuit. Where is the legal foundation justification for this cases? You have to do a lot of stuff, but no direct relationship with our CZM objective policies.
So you're seeing it's questionable, but not where we can't do that.
You, if you want to do that, that's your choice, your authority. But if people bring this kind of condition to the court for lawsuit. Then you have to defend yourself from CZM program objective and policies. If we can do that, then you can, if you cannot, you will lose the case.
Got it. Thank you. That's all the questions that I have, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on that. Thank you. I just want to follow up on that last question real fast. So it sounds like that question has not been tested in the courts. And it would kind of be new territory for the commission to go into.
Yes, I didn't see any case yet, but to be honest, for conditions, as my condition, they have the estimate guidelines. Twelve five A section twenty six and also section twelve five A section two, really important for estimate permit conditions.
Okay, thank you. And real fast, I want to acknowledge that Commissioner DeCoste is here now. Commissioner DeCoste, can you give us the rundown of where you're at and if there's anybody with you?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Sorry, I missed the majority of it. Um, I am on a boat in Pearl Harbor with a staff, maybe a dozen staff coming in and out of the cabin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll continue with any questions that commissioners have for O P S D on their presentation. Uh, okay, oh, Commissioner DeCoste?
Five, off the chair. Thanks, Chair, and I swear I didn't time it. I didn't time it just to land on this particular topic. It just, but I, I had a question, you were talking about the public trust. And I heard you talk about variances, so I was just. Uh, perhaps you can clarify, once private property is on the public trust. And the laws are there to protect public trust. My understanding is you have to allow the property to stay on the public trust, they need to get a variance. So I guess my question is, are there lots of variances in West Maui to allow? Private property that's on state lands or how does that work? What triggers that? And can you speak to that?
Okay, you say that, that property on the state land, that's an easement issue, that's not beyond the Shawna setback issue. I emphasize again Shawna setback, purpose Shawna setback is a prohibit structure. And the development within Shawna area, that means purpose of Shawna setbacks. But because of the hardship, there potentially some hardship for land use issue. Or they cannot use their economic value for the land use. Then the variance can be come out. Variance exemption to prohibition means variance is not permit. Where is a, a usual case? So if we issue variance very generally, just normally, just like a permit, then lose the meaning of variance. So variance different from as may permit.
Okay.
Where is supposedly much more difficult and also exemptional. Otherwise, variance lose the meaning.
Okay, and I'm sorry, it maybe it was discussed earlier, I did go through the slide deck. But the, when private property is now on public trust lands. Is the variance process the only way the public can have input? On whether they want those lands to be used to be leased privately? Or to have the structures removed? Isn't the variance the only time when? The public can intervene in how those lands are used? Does that make any sense?
Okay, I will argue with you. You talking about the private property on the state land or public trust resource. That's totally beyond your county jurisdiction. We keep in mind Shawna divide between county jurisdiction and the state, right? If and the state land means under the D N R jurisdiction already. Your county from Shawna inland Shawna setback also decided by your county. If the Shawna area is public land, how the private property on the state land, on the public land? That's totally different story. There's not a setback issue anymore.
Right, and that, and if it's determined it's on state and no longer on county. Then it has to go through a variance process.
There's not a good variant person, let's have a good D N R board of D N R for determination easement issue or not. Or ask them to remove, like seawall, right? Before in the private land, because Shawna erosion happened, then seawall located on state land right now. They will need land, land division from D N R for easement. They will go to legislation for easement requirement. That's beyond your county.
Okay, and it, and the only way it would ever trigger state or D L N R. Is if the county goes to D L N R and says, we have an application that's clearly on state lands. You guys need to intervene, right? The, the state will not get involved in any parcel. It doesn't matter how far into the ocean it is, until the county triggers the state and says, we need your help here. This is clearly an encroachment. So until that happens.
Yes.
There is no state involvement.
Yes, you are right. Of course, state and county should are working together. And you point out the case, encouragement happen, then D N R supposed to be involved. Before your state, county take action, right? Because you must be state and county working together regarding the situation. You county responsible for Shawna setback. From Shawna to inland of setback nine, that's Shawna setback area supposedly prohibit. But variance can be unusual, can be happen.
Right, so I, you know, somebody who looks at West Maui and sees it's all encroachment could blame the state. For not protecting the public trust, but it sounds like the state has no say until the county brings them into the process. So they can say, no, we have never been asked to get involved in any of these encroachments. So that's not our problem, is that?
No, that's not excuse, but of course you county can trigger them, say, okay, come to take a side visit. It's to investigate situation. But state themselves also can do themselves instead of waiting for county, ask them.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any further questions for O P S D? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again for your presentation. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we have Tara Owens next.
Aloha, Chair, and planning commissioners. Uh, yes, my name is Tara Owens. I am extension faculty with the University of Hawaii Sea Grant Program, for those who don't know me already. Uh, so my background is in coastal geology. Uh, my program is based at U H Manoa, but I live and work here on Maui. And serve as a liaison to the planning department, to the planning commission, to the county council and, and our community. To help transfer science into the decision making that's occurring here. And also to help with the solutions to the problems we're having. Um, this image right here on the front screen is a really good example. It, um, it kind of shows the results of different C Z M approaches over the year. So if you look in the very background, see, does my pointer work? Oh, it's really tiny, really tiny pointer. But in the background here, this is the north part of Kaanapali, north of Puukai Ka'aa. So the, the more recently built section of Kaanapali. You can see that there's a natural buffer between the beach and the resort buildings. Uh, because those came along later when setbacks were required. And so those buildings would have been subject to a one hundred and fifty foot setback and have some dune management responsibilities. But if you look closer in the foreground here. You can see where there are these older buildings, probably built in the seventies, probably before setbacks. And you can see those buildings are protected by hard structures, walls or, or rocks. And the result of that is that there's no longer beach or shoreline access or use of those public resources. And then the, the neighboring property to the left here is experiencing additional problems. Associated with flanking of the waves and erosion onto their property. Um, resulting into further intervention along the shoreline. So those are just, it's a good overview of, of how coastal zone management works. So I get the privilege here of preceding the department. They're going to talk to you about the nitty gritty of the rules. I can share some examples of what's happening on, in coastal zone management through the lens of the, what's happening on Maui. Um, a lot of this is repeat from previous sessions. So you seasoned commissioners have seen much of this before. But might be good to think about in the context of what's coming in the near future in terms of projects. Um, and of course, some of this may be new for our, our newer commissioner. Uh, okay, so this, every place on the shoreline has a story. And oftentimes coastal zone management is a part of that story, even if we don't get the time to share it with you. So this is a, this is a good example of, I think, a good C Z M outcome. This is down in Kula Kai, South Maui, along the Charlie Young comma Ole One shoreline area. You can see the homes in the background. Uh, and you can see the nice, well-developed dune in front of those homes, serving as a natural buffer to erosion and waves. It wasn't always this nice. Um, this was one of the first dune restoration projects I worked on with the county. Uh, the department, the mayor's office, volunteers in our community. But prior to this, there were all kinds of encroaching over watered vegetation, non-native vegetation, poisonous cactuses. Um, hot tubs, um, all kinds of, of physical and, uh, green encroachments into the shoreline area. That were prohibiting the dune from developing and, and, and turning into this nice example that you see here. There is a little lag with these slides. This is another example. This is moving around to the north in the Ma'alaya area. This image is from two thousand nineteen. You can see the sign in the image there says danger seawall is crumbling, do not climb on it. Um, this is not an uncommon condition in our past. The way we responded to erosion and high waves was to armor properties with walls, um, and rocker vetements. Um, and those can work to stop the erosion for a short period of time. Uh, but in the end, what we very often see is that these structures fail as well. And there's several mechanisms for that failure. And this is one example of where, um, an older wall, uh, was failing over time. And there's more to the story. Actually, I'm going to back up here. If you can see in the foreground here, if you look at. Ooh, if you can see my little tiny pointer, you can see this palm tree here and the fence in the background. And if you go to the next image, you can see that same palm tree and fence in the background behind that tree. And this is after removal of the seawall, um, which I think was removed in two thousand twenty one. Um, and now you can see that there's a nice cobble beach forming in front of that property. We don't always have the opportunity to do projects like this, where we can remove structures and resume natural conditions. But this was one of those cases where that was possible. The original home on the property was removed. Um, it's a large property with space to work with and nothing would have been threatened by removing the seawall. And the shoreline is now trying to reach its new natural equilibrium and, um, the conditions are looking really good there. But this is a lot of what we see around the island and I know all of you see it too. Um, and the impacts of sea level rise and coastal erosion and high waves are driving all of our plans and policies. And the actions and the things that you guys deliberate on. Um, top left there, Kahana Sunset in West Maui during a typical seasonal swell. That building has been abandoned, uh, because the waves are going below it. Um, the top middle, that is the former Kapuka Ulua or Baldwin Beach Pavilion. That has recently been removed during the peak summertime erosion, when it was undermined for probably the third or the fourth time. I'll come back to that. Top right is South Kihei Road. You can see how close the high wash of waves is to the cars. Uh, bottom left is, uh, the Kaanapali Beach Club. Uh, you saw that on the very first image as well. And you can see erosion occurring in that image and, and the, the backshore sediments, um, dissolving into the ocean. Uh, bottom middle is Kaanapali during, um, a summertime erosion event two years ago. Um, and bottom right is the highway out to the west side, which commonly gets inundated during summertime king tides. Especially if we combine it with a, with a swell event. So these things are happening all around the island and statewide. And the contributions to these conditions are things like sea level rise. Seasonal waves and storms and things that we humans have done along the way. Our land uses, the historical practice of putting up walls. Um, there also have been cases of mining sand from beaches. Um, and we're going to focus here, um, for a few minutes on sea level rise. And I just kind of want to emphasize this for a second. We, we have lots of natural hazards we deal with here in the Hawaiian islands. As you know, we, we have coastal storms like Kona storms that come along once in a while and change the shape of our shoreline. We might have hurricanes that come along. We have things like wildfires. These are really destructive, um, disasters, but they have like a discreet beginning and an end, right? So I say they're, they're kind of come and go disasters or episodic disasters. But sea level rise is different. Sea level rise is a come and stay disaster. It means that our shoreline conditions are worsening little bit every day, every week, every month, every year over time. As sea level is rising and, and, and creating some impacts on our shoreline. Um, so the, the good thing about that is it means we have time to plan and adapt. The bad thing about that is that it's easy to ignore and defer the answers to, or the solutions to that problem as it gets worse and worse and worse. And as council member Tamara Paulton said earlier, it's when you combine those rising sea levels with these come and stay, or come and go disasters. These episodic disasters like storms, that's when we really start to see impacts on the shoreline. Um, okay, so I think all of you probably know by now, um, there's, there's been a lot of work in this area in the state of Hawaii. Our Hawaii sea level rise viewer came along in two thousand eighteen. You can zoom into any property, you can look at the current and future exposure to sea level rise. And it happens in a few different ways. So you see on the right hand side, it's called passive flooding or high tide flooding. So, um, as the ocean rises up, uh, you might have flooding coming over on the beach or the shoreline. Um, into properties and affecting infrastructure. Or even away from the shoreline, you might have areas where water is coming up through the ground. So these are low areas like, um, wetlands. Um, they may exist, but they're probably going to grow and expand in the future. Or new wetlands may emerge through the ground. Um, and that is happening in places like Kihei or at Ukume Hame or in Lahaina, uh, something to look out for. The other, the other way sea level rise affects us in, in terms of flooding is when we take the rising sea level. And we add our seasonal wave events on top of it. Um, so we have annual highway flooding. Uh, so that example of when the water flows over Hono Apie Lani Highway, um, that's something we've seen pretty often. Again, when you have a high tide and you have a swell on top of that, we start having these impacts. Um, they're infrequent at first, they become more frequent and eventually with sea level rise will become permanent. And the last way that sea level rise can affect us that's not flooding at all is coastal erosion, uh, or land loss. So we're essentially, we're talking about losing the land along the shoreline. And, um, this is the reason why erosion has been the basis of Maui county's setbacks since two thousand three. Because it's really hard to mitigate land loss. You can mitigate flooding by raising structures, elevating them, maybe reconfiguring them. Uh, but it's really hard to mitigate land loss other than to get out of the way. And so we have to, we, we look at all these different, um, impacts and try to find solutions to them. Depending on what's happening at a given place at a given time. Now, uh, going back to two thousand eighteen, when Now, going back to 2018, when we developed the Sea Level Rise Viewer, we were looking at, our statewide planning target was 3.2 feet of sea level rise by 2100. The science has evolved since then and is continuing to evolve. So what you see here are projections of sea level rise going forward, and you can see a range of projections in those colors. There's a range of projections because it's hard to predict what our society is going to continue to do with carbon emissions and whether we're going to try to mitigate those or reduce them. So we have low-end projections and high-end projections, but as of now, if you look at sort of an intermediate level scenario, our, our, our projection for the state of Hawaii is now 3.9 feet of sea level rise by the century, rather than three feet of sea level rise. So the story is getting more complicated. And then, of course, the question that comes of all this is what, what do we do in response? And a lot of times, the permits you're deciding on are responses to erosion. And so these are sort of the range of things that are in our coastal resilience toolbox. From the top, one end of the spectrum being armoring the shoreline, you saw and I mentioned, we now know the consequences of armoring the shoreline leads to beach loss, it leads to exacerbated erosion on neighboring properties. And I think Shi Chow mentioned earlier, it is now shoreline, new shoreline armoring is now banned in the state as of 2020 because of that. The other end of the spectrum at the bottom there, do nothing. It's kind of like, you know, not making a decision and letting things fall into the ocean, which also can be very undesirable. So the preferred strategies are the things there in the middle, trying to accommodate sea level rise where we can. If you're subject to flooding, maybe that's elevating or reconfiguring. If you're on the shoreline, you can, there are sometimes opportunities for ecosystem-based adaptation, which might be in the form of dune or beach or wetland or reef preservation or restoration. I'll show you a few more examples at the very end. And then the other option is retreat, moving away from the shoreline. And that can be something that's done, you know, in a, by relocating structures or through setback policies, which don't, don't change the scenario or the landscape overnight, but over time incrementally, when new, new development occurs or when redevelopment occurs, it requires things to be pushed away from the shoreline. And that's an integral part of the CZM program. A lot has happened since the Sea Level Rise Viewer in 2018, and I'll try to go through this pretty quick so we can get on to the rules. Shi Chow mentioned already Act 162020, coastal zone management updates. That had to do with increasing the statewide setback, the minimum setback, also outlawing new shoreline harm, armoring. Climate and sea level rise are now required to be analyzed in environmental assessments. There was legislation to require our state agencies to assess and plan for sea level rise in 2021. And there's also now real estate disclosure. So anytime property is changing hands along the shoreline, that has to be disclosed to the new property owner. So we're kind of getting this into the lexicon and the minds of everybody on our islands. And then Maui County, there's been a ton of action as well. And of course, what we hope is to continue to build on this action. But a lot of things have happened. All of our departments have, have completed vulnerability assessments, looking at the, the exposure and the vulnerability of their assets to sea level rise. So Public Works looked at the roadways and DEM looked at wastewater infrastructure. Parks Department has an amazing dashboard where they assess vulnerability at all the coastal parks and identify adaptation strategies. This information's going into our community plans, so our longer-term land use plans, our hazard mitigation plans. There's a managed retreat revolving fund that, that county council can take credit for, which was a pretty innovative idea. And then the two bottom boxes there, I'm going to emphasize. The shoreline setback rules, this commission was a huge part of adopting amended rules over a six-plus-year process, and those were adopted in 2023. And then Jim, you're going to hear more about that from Jim. And I'm just going to give you a couple of examples to end here of regional resilience projects. We have many things going on around the island. And again, we don't often get to tell these stories. We have a dune restoration project at Kapuka Oluwa. I'll show one slide on that. There's been a wetlands overlay and mapping process. Seegrant is working on an environmentally sensitive areas atlas tool right now that's going to be part of permitting. We have a resilience plan for Ma'alaia. We have West Maui specific wave modeling done, and Molokai has been developing a resilience plan as well. And there's lots more. Those are just a few examples. We have a long-term dune and ecosystem restoration program that's been, that I just wanted to highlight, because Maui was the first county in the state to build in to our code protections for our coastal dunes. So we have and we retain and we protect and restore those nice buffers on the shoreline. Seegrant's been a huge part of that. The planning department's been a huge part of that. Parks Department's been a huge part of that. Lots of evolution over the years. And all of our experiences here on Maui have been captured in this Hawaii Dune Restoration Manual as of 2022, which gives everyone guidance on how we can do more of this, still an underused And just one, again, many examples to highlight, huge partnership between the county, the state, Seegrant, Surf Rider, and we have some funding from the federal government through National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to do dune restoration work at Kapuka Oluwa or Baldwin Beach. This is an area, it's a, it's considered a Kama'aina beach, and it, because of an extractive and kind of destructive history of sand mining there, has the highest rates of erosion of anywhere on our state. But there's still a lot of sand in that system, and, and there's a lot we can do to help. We can't turn back the clock, but we can kind of try to help heal some of those scars of the past by, you know, restoring the, the natural system there, the dune system, which will help us be more resilient in the face of sea level rise. And hopefully, we can apply these ideas and approaches to other places as well. And I will end there with another example that I won't spend the time telling you the story about, but is also a really, really nice story. And, and I'll transition over to Jim for the rules.
Thank you, commissioners. Any questions for Ms. Owens, Vice Chair?
Sure, thanks, Tara. So, you know, and I live in West Maui, and we lost about 50 yards of beach. But I was wondering, how much sea level rise have we got there in the last 100 years or so?
Yeah, there's a tide gauge in Kahului Harbor. It's the only one we have, and it measures, it's been there since the 40s. It measures water level every day as it goes up and down with the tide and then long-term. We've had about eight to nine inches of sea level rise in Maui basically in 100 years, if you extrapolate that. So eight to nine inches that we've measured. And as a result of just that eight to nine inches, you, you can, you've probably observed all the changes along the shoreline that that
Fifty yards, yeah, 50 yards.
Yeah. And we're expecting now feet on top of that.
Yeah, well, NOAA showed actually six inches in the last 120 years here by satellite imagery. So I don't know where we are going to get. And, and most of the stuff I read said it's lower than now, the averages that we've set up, that we got some up there, eight feet or something. But they said it's, it's, it's not rising that fast. Are you familiar with that?
Well, I think maybe what you're, you're making a distinction between what we've observed at our tide gauges, and the tide gauges measure actual water level changes, right? And now you can add on satellite information that, that measures water surface elevations as well, and so NOAA can add to the, the empirically observed tide gauge data. But yeah, so here in Hawaii and on Maui specifically, our rate has been somewhere around eight to nine inches in 100 years. But what, those projections of the future are based on models of global sea level rise and how that's going to change the conditions globally and here in Hawaii in the coming years.
And do you see that, any replenishments can be done? Replenishing beaches or restoring beaches?
Yeah, there's a lot, of course, that I left out, trying, trying to be brief. But so those are really good questions. Going back to the slide of the tools that are in the toolbox, I showed examples of dune restoration, which is possible in some locations, not possible in other locations. If we're dealing with a shoreline that's really sand-starved, or the beach is pretty much already been, has disappeared, then, you know, dune restoration isn't possible. And one tool that can be considered is beach restoration. That's a little different. That's a case where you would usually find sand, your sand supply offshore, either pump it or barge it back onto the beach to kind of re-widen the beach to a former condition. And that is a tool in the toolbox. And there have been several projects on, on Maui that have been planned, including Ka'ana Poli, Kahana, and the Pele Bay. There's a few projects that have been completed. There's one on the, at Stable Road on the North Shore, which was a really small-scale beach restoration project. And there's, you know, pros and cons of these approaches. As a coastal geologist, from my perspective, it's, it's a useful tool if it's used in the right way, in the right circumstances. But it's not perfect. There are impacts. And there are really complicated conversations that have been happening in our community about whether there's support for that approach or not.
So what are the downsides? It'd be for us to know. So if they're going to, because there's proposed ones now, isn't there?
There's proposed projects, yeah. And the, the three that I mentioned haven't gotten off the ground for various reasons, funding, and also the concerns that are coming from the community over doing these types of projects. So impacts include, there's a concern over water quality impacts. You know, when you're pumping sand onto a beach, there's at least a temporary impact during construction time on, you know, turbidity and water quality. There's a concern that that might then permanently impact the reef environment that's so sensitive. There are concerns that, I mean, these are, while they are good, can be good solutions, they're also only temporary, because you put sand back on a beach, but the erosion and the sea level rise doesn't stop. So the erosion continues. So, you know, you might get, depending on the scale of the project, a 10-year life out of the project, and then you have to be prepared to do it again. And they're very expensive projects. So there are concerns that maybe that, that isn't a long-term solution.
And how about with the assistance of groynes?
So if you add groynes, so for example, the Kahana project includes groynes, and those are shore perpendicular structures, in that case with T heads that are meant to help control the wave energy and slow down the erosion. So if you add groynes to a project, they certainly do extend the lifetime or the expected lifespan of the project. But they also, the downside of those is they also have their own impacts. They, of course, change the way the shoreline looks. And some folks consider that really invasive. There can be impacts of the placement of groynes too, in terms of if they displace reef or some other type of sensitive near-shore environment.
Sure.
So that, the thing about the coastal zone management toolbox is, it's always about, there's no one size fits all. It's all about trying to find the right tool in the right place. But none of the tools in our toolbox are, are perfect for the complex situations we're facing on our shorelines. Every tool has benefits and drawbacks, and, and it's, it's always going to be a trade-off. And that's the challenge we're facing on our shorelines.
Sure. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kealoha?
Mahalo, Tara, for coming and speaking with us. I want to actually, I have two questions now, but I want to follow up with what Commissioner Thompson brought up. And I was really confused, actually, I remember this conversation coming up the very first time we did this training, but I was, it was like my first month, and I was terrified to really say anything in any meetings. But I'll just bring it up this time, is that, I guess, in the oceanography community, well, I mean, T groynes are defined as shoreline, and I don't know, maybe this is a question for OPSD too, but T groynes are defined as shoreline hardening. And if CZM 16 says we can't harden, we're not allowed to do shoreline hardening, then how is it that we can use T groynes?
Yeah, I can give you an initial response, and then I think it probably would be good to hear from OPSD. It's a really good question, and I do remember you asking it before. I think last year, when I gave this orientation, we did include some slides of these proposed projects. It's always hard to find a balance between sharing too much and taking your entire day and sharing enough to make you feel good about your knowledge. Yeah, I think if you were to open up any textbook from, you know, coastal geology or, you know, oceanography academic textbook, it probably would classify groynes in, in the category of shoreline hardening. You're, you know, engineering the shoreline with a structure that's usually made out of either concrete or, or rock. That said, there is a distinction, I think, in terms of how groynes operate compared to like, you know, their shore, shore perpendicular versus a seawall, which is shore parallel, in that you, you can have, with groynes, you can have a hybrid system where it's combined with the structures and a sand beach. So you still get the benefit of retaining a sand beach within that groin structure. So there is that difference that I think is important. And I would, yes, this is where we should probably turn it over to OP, but in terms of the law and the rules, there is, I don't think, a definition of shoreline hardening in, in the CZM law. There is a definition of shoreline hardening in the county of Maui's shoreline rules, and I think it intentionally excluded groynes from the definition of shoreline hardening so that that could remain a tool in the toolbox if and when the department and the commission deemed it a useful tool.
Thank you. Yeah, I remember that, and I just, I never really felt good about letting that go because I didn't understand it, but thanks for, yeah, providing that more information.
So, sorry, this is a Shitawli from OPSD. I regarding shoreline hardening structure from 125A, the session two, they didn't say offshore structure is shoreline hardening. They say seawall relevant is shoreline hardening, but they on purpose didn't say offshore structure like a T groin is shoreline hardening. That's why GNR, OCCR, also use some offshore structure for project also. So that's, that's 125A, on purpose, make these kinds of things don't limit, say offshore structure also shoreline hardening.
Okay, so they're offshore, the offshore, they're considering T groynes offshore structure, so it's not in the CZM 16. It's not considered shoreline hardening in CZM 16?
No, yes, no, no, yes, didn't consider the shoreline hardening structure for offshore structure, yeah, from 125A, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. That has been on my mind for a year. And then I have one more question for, maybe just a clarifying question for Tara. You were, you talked about the Silexha. Did you say the Silexha was based on three? So that's what we actually have in our shoreline rules, but now the projection is 3.9 feet?
That's exactly right. At the, at the time, all of that work was started, doing the modeling and developing the viewer, prior to 2018, the high-end projection of sea level rise prior to 2018, the high-end projection of sea level rise was 3.2 feet for Hawaii. And, you know, a lot has happened in six, seven years since then. And yeah, so now the intermediate projection is 3.9 feet. And the high-end projection is well above that.
Do you know, what is the, what is it called when you're, like, what is the confidence for moderate projection? What is the confidence for 3.9? Is that like a 50? I don't know. You know what I mean? Like, is, are we sure, like, is, are we, is that like, do you know what I'm trying to get like? Are we really sure it's 3.9? Or is that just kind of like, it's probably?
It's a good question. You know, there are, I'll have to, I might have to say I'll get back to you because in the NOAA report itself, they do have, they have assigned confidence to the different projections. So I think there's something like a 10% confidence at the highest end projection. And I can't remember off the top of my head right now, even though I should, what the confidence level is for intermediate scenarios.
No worries. I think you just saying that 10% was the highest is helpful for me to understand. At medium, we're going higher than 10% confidence.
There's also the uncertainty around timing, right? So these projections are for 2100. Although there's this, I think, still a fairly high degree of uncertainty around the exact timing. I think with 2100 being the latest that it's expected to see these thresholds reached, but could be sooner, again, if our contribution to emissions keep steady or going up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions, Tara. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Dicos, in one second. So I want to just note that it's 2 o'clock just about, and we have our South Maui Community Plan meeting at 3:00 scheduled to start, and we're on number two of five training sessions that we're supposed to fit in today. So we are talking with the director. We're going to put off number three and number four. Because we've gotten, well, at least for number three, we've gotten some degree of that already with our community plan. Presentations from Long Range Division and then the Plan Implementation Division presentation would kind of come into play when we get into the action section of the South Maui Community Plan. So, yeah, so I guess real fast, Mr. Buika, you have 30 minutes on here. Do you think you're going to need all 30 minutes?
29.
Okay, because I'm wondering, Commissioners, if we can squeeze in this SMA rules presentation and then try and get in the Department of OEV Resources presentation? Because we've been wanting to hear from them for quite a while, and I think they will provide good information for us, even for community plan review. And just on the side, I know they've been working hard on their presentation, so I want to honor the time that they've spent on that. But would you guys be okay if we try and squeeze in this SMA and OEV Resources?
And skip the shoreline rules? Or, I mean, it's either one or the other, I think.
Okay. Oh, so that would be like 30 minutes apiece, you think?
Of what? No, of the 30 minutes, well, I have SMA rules and then shoreline rules and then OEV, you want to, 30 minutes? It's up to you. I know there are probably a lot of people online who want to see everything, so.
Yes. I guess, can we see what we can get through with you within 30 minutes?
Sure.
And then?
Oh, and then leave another 30 minutes. Yeah, okay, sure.
Yeah. And then whatever we don't cover will go on. Hopefully another agenda soon.
It will be the second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January, we'll have the rest of our trainings. Okay. And then we're probably going to have to defer the director's report. Okay. Is there anything real fat? Oh, I guess we can't do that. That's a different item. Okay. Yes, so let's go half an hour with you, and then we'll have OEV Resources at 2:30.
Okay, thank you. Just give me five minutes notice or whatever.
Okay.
I'll keep track. But, so, my name again is Jim Buika. I am a regulator. I have been a regulator with the Planning Department for 17 years, doing SMA and shoreline rules, special management area projects around the island. I've been working with Tara for 15 years. We've seen a lot of changes along the shoreline. We have a lot of experience. We have lots of small, big, small, medium, big projects, fun projects, not so fun projects, just trying to manage the shoreline as much as possible. So these SMA rules are really meant for for the Maui Planning Commission and how the department assesses a project and how you guys assess a project. So your authority is as the sole arbiter really of the Coastal Zone Management Act, and that is manifest as the special management area rules for the Maui Planning Commission and the shoreline rules for the Maui Planning Commission. And as mentioned before, we do by Maui County Charter, the Maui Planning Commission is responsible for Maui Island. And we have two other planning commissions. So we deal with six. So really, if OPSD is still online, we really deserve more than one quarter of the share of money. We administer six sets of rules on three islands. So this is the SMA. Shi Chow showed this. I think we're all familiar with that, so I'll go fast on that. But it is really specifically to, as development projects come forward and applications, to look at how we can apply, what is a permit? Really, it's, and how do we do it? You know, how do we manage the SMA? It's really through conditions by the Planning Department staff and/or the Maui Planning Commission to make a project better. Somebody comes in with an application. They want to get a permit. A permit is not an obstruction or a restriction. It's how do we make the project the best that it can be so that we protect the marine resources and also protect that structure from coastal hazards, as we're going to have to deal with in Lahaina as time goes by. And how do we do that? We do that through, as Shi Chow talked about, there are SMA criteria, one, and SMA guidelines that both come from the Coastal Zone Management Act. So this is subchapter two, right out of the SMA rules that says that we judge a project by special management area objectives and policies. The objectives and policies of this chapter, your rules, the commission rules, shall be those set forth in Section 205A dash 2 HRS as amended. So HR 205A is the Coastal Zone Management Act, back and forth. So basically, your rules refer back to the objectives and policies in the Coastal Zone Management Act. B, in implementing these objectives and policies, the department or the commission, as appropriate, we both have responsibilities, shall fully consider ecological, cultural, historic, and aesthetic values as well as needs for economic development. So it's not only a one-way street. It's a two-way street. Economic development moves forward, but how can we do it in the best way possible to protect the ecology, culture, historic nature, and aesthetic values? And then the next section, Section 11, there is a special management area review guidelines. The review guidelines set forth in Section 205A again, 26. So Section 2 and 26 are the ones that Shi Chow was talking about. As amended, shall be used by the director and the commission as appropriate for the review of developments proposed in the special management area. So there are specific review criteria and specific guidelines that we as planners assess and then bring it to you. And so how does that manifest through you? So how does the Planning Commission assess an SMA project? Again, the proposed activity must be consistent with the SMA guidelines, 205A 26. And there are 12, out of that, those guidelines, there are 12 significance criteria that we evaluate a project against. So it's kind of, it's very formative, the way we review projects. The MPC reviews projects against these criteria. And I'll show you what they are. So the idea, again, the mantra here really is adverse effects may exist but are minimized in the light of a compelling public interest, such as public health and safety, as well as economic development. So there is this balance of public health, safety, economic development, with minimizing impacts on the coastal zone. So it's a two-way street. So this is key. These are the key, and Shi Chow brought them up, each of these up. So the SMA guidelines are, the gray ones are in the Coastal Zone Management Act and the objectives and policies. That's our guiding light, how we review projects. So the, from the SMA guidelines, we have in the SMA rules, we have these 12 criteria that I'll show you next, and those in the brown box there. So the 12 criteria actually refer back to the, that arrow going back up refers to the objectives and policies. So these are how we review a project formally. A proposed action may have a significant effect on the environment when the proposed action involves an irrevocable loss of natural or cultural resource, obviously. Significantly curtails range of beneficial use of the environment, conflicts with states or counties' long-term environmental policies and goals, substantially affects the economic or social welfare of the community, involves substantial secondary impacts or increased effects on infrastructure, is part of a cumulative effect, or involves commitment of a larger action, substantially affects, these are the ecology ones here, affects on a rare, threatened, endangered species, animal, plant, or habitat, is contrary to state plan, county's general plan, appropriate community plan, zoning subdivision, detrimentally affects air quality, water quality, ambient noise levels, and affects environmentally sensitive areas, such as floodplains, shoreline, tsunami, erosion areas, coastal waters, fresh waters, and substantially alter, may substantially alter natural landforms and existing public views through and along the shoreline. It's a lot of verbiage, but those are the 11 criteria that a planner like myself and the other staff planners, we review a project against all of these things from the information that comes in. And then the 12th one is contrary to the objectives and policies of the Coastal Zone Management Act. So that brings us right back to the Coastal Zone Management Act. So what happens is through that 12th one, all those 11 criteria melt away, and it brings us right back to the objectives and policies of the Coastal Zone Management Act, which is really good because those objectives and policies at the state level law are not fully captured in our SMA criteria. So I know it's a lot to to glom onto very quickly, but these are, Shi Chow, Deb showed these. These are the objectives here. They're, we look at recreational, historic and cultural, scenic and open space, coastal ecosystems, economic uses, coastal hazards, managing development, public participation, beach protection and access, and marine resources. So these are the 10 objectives that we go back and also review. So all of this should be in the beginning of a major SMA report that comes to you guys. It'll have all the laws that you review it by, and then there should be information on all these sections in there. So I'll give you one example that really doesn't, isn't captured in our SMA review criteria, but is in the objectives and policies here. To scenic and open space, protect, preserve, and restore coastal views, open space and scenery. Well, this is one of my favorite pet peeves here. This was along Pealani Highway in Wailea, recently approved or a while ago now. It's the monkey pod and then the development that went next to it here. This is from a coastal zone highway. I took a picture of Olave. This is the development going up. This view here of the ocean is protected by the Coastal Zone Management Act. And over time, this thing was developed. And that's what we have there now. So all along that Pealani Highway, we are losing precious scenic and open space views, which is what Maui Highland is all about. It's about the landscape, the views, the beauty. So this is what we ended up with and should have, could have, would have been protected. But it wasn't. Anyway, that's just one example of the objectives and policies can be used. Very quickly, this is Section 26, the SMA guidelines. You know, the authority shall seek to minimize coastal impacts. No dredging, filling, altering of coastal areas, that's obvious, reduction in beach size, impediments to public beach access, coastal recreation, loss of coastal views, adverse effects to water quality, fisheries, wildlife and habitat, and loss of existing potential ag uses. This is restating it in another way. Same thing, we want adequate controls minimizing adverse effects. And the bottom line is the Coastal Zone Management Act, through the SMA guidelines, and then your planning commission rules, seek to minimize where reasonable adverse impacts to the environment. So we're always trying to reach that balance. This just goes through the authorities, the commission versus the director. The commission is, reviews SMA major use permits. As Shi Chow mentioned, we will be having a lot of major use permits for Lahaina coming to you if all the regulations and laws stay the same. So there will be a lot on your plate. The director, going back to that. The director and our staff basically review minor permits, emergency permits, and exemptions. So that's how the workload is broken up. The important point here is the major permit is any development that is over $500,000. It requires a public hearing. Owners within 500 feet are notified by certified mail, and there can be conditions to avoid, minimize, and mitigate impacts. Minor and emergency permits are managed by the planning director. Emergency permits are for emergencies when there's a situation where there potentially may be imminent or substantial harm to public welfare. And it, we don't have time to bring it to the commission. The director makes that decision, and then we bring it to you later on. We did an emergency permit to remove the pavilion at Baldwin Beach, and the permits come out. We still owe you at least a quick and dirty overview of that, and we can do that in the near future. Shoreline setback objectives. This is an emergency situation here. This is the type of thing where the director needs to sometimes step in. You know, the objectives are really, when we have situations like this, are to move out of harms way, which is coastal erosion, plan for the obsolescence of structures in the shoreline setback, ensure shoreline access, and limit the types of structures and activities in the shoreline setback area. So that's the shoreline rules, which I can go into. So again, exemptions are another category. And there are categories, it's been expanded in the state law. And there are categories, it's been expanded in the state law to include a lot of other new activities. But a major one has always been a single-family residence, right? You can imagine if we had to take every single, single-family residence to the commission, an impossible task. So they are, they are deemed not development. But act sixteen has excluded shore, uh, single-family residence, development of single-family residence along any shoreline parcel in the Hawaiian Islands as, pretty much as not exempt. So if, if you redevelop under 500 grand, which is the minor permit, which I didn't explain, you can build, but greater than $500,000, it will become a major permit. So what is happening with the rebuilding of Lahaina is that any property owner along the shoreline that wants to rebuild and the valuation is over $500,000 will be coming, will be assessed by the planning department. We're working one-on-one with those people, with the owners, and it will come for for you for review and to mitigate as much as possible prior to approval. Minor permits and emergency permits come to you and the next, those are your list that you have in your agendas. And any of these items can be contested within 10 days of a director's decision. So these are some of the common exemptions. Single-family residents, not on a shoreline and not part of a larger action. Again, it doesn't mean that a house can just be rubber stamped to be built. We look at archaeology, we look at drainage, we look at views. Any potential impact on the shoreline. Structural and non-structural improvements to single-family residences is exempted. Repairs and maintenance of roads and highways. Routine dredging of streams is maintenance. Repair and maintenance of underground utilities. Repair and maintenance of existing structures and demolition of some structures. So a lot of these things don't come to you. These are all done by the planning department. There is a variance, we talked about the variance that does come to the planning department. It requires compliance with chapter three, four, three, which is the environmental law. It is a public hearing and all abutting landowners are notified. It requires a state-certified shoreline. So as she chow did say, variances are rare. They are. It is a, it's a it, it's, how did he put it? It was, it was, it was, it's an exception to a prohibition. So an exception to prohibition in the law is, should be what a varying variance is. You shouldn't just be so, but we potentially have variances coming forward from Lahaina into the future. There are exceptions to the variance. They are in the rule. I just took these summarized out of these. There are some criteria for where a variance is allowed. And obviously it has to be hardship and be something that is taken seriously and is the best practical solution for the purposes of the SMA rules and the shoreline rules along the shoreline. And there are mandatory variance conditions that are required. So that's it for the SMA rules. How am I doing for time? Then five minutes, is that it?
Yeah, we're at three, I mean, two twenty. So at this juncture, questions from the commission?
Yeah, now Commissioner Hippolito had to step out for something and he'll be back at three. And there's Commissioner Kailaha. Commissioner Tico, see how your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Buca, for your presentation. I think I misspoke when I asked the question of the state. I always confuse variance with easement. Can you share with me when you're reviewing an application or a property? At what point, what would trigger you bringing in the state because of an encroachment that would require an easement process?
Basically, I turned to my colleague Tara Owens, who works with her colleague Amy Wertz, who is in Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. And Tara, on a weekly basis, talks with Amy and we share everything back and forth. So we are in complete communication with Michael Kane's office, DLNR Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands. They review some of our shoreline permits that go out to add in conditions. For years, I have worked with Mr. Sam Lemo, who was the predecessor for Michael Kane. There are, as you know, there are many, many along the shoreline, we haven't gotten to the shoreline rules yet, but there are many, many projects where 95% is in the county jurisdiction and there's maybe a little bit in the state jurisdiction and with three or four or five people for the entire state of Hawaii. OCCL has often deferred to us through the years to manage the project. Yes, Jim, if you, I agree with what you do, what you're doing. Please take it off our plate and we can review the permit. So I know their conditions, they know our conditions. Basically, we've combined shoreline conditions. So for every shoreline permit, I am an advocate or the department is an advocate or similar protection of ocean, ocean resources as, as the state is. It's, you know, it's just tough. As you know, the jurisdictional boundary of, you know, me stepping three feet out onto the beach and somebody in Oahu is managing that area versus me stepping three feet back onto somebody's property is difficult. That's about the most benign adjective I can use. But we try to work in sync as much as possible. So to answer your question, so we, we work together all the time.
Okay, and I apologize, I probably should have asked this after the shoreline. But because I've asked this question a lot and I don't think I get an answer. The, is it correct that the high wash of the wave defines the boundary between state and county?
Oh, hold on, when they're, because the next section of the presentation is on the shoreline. So some of your questions might be answered by this presentation. Is that?
Sure. I'll just state it real quick and then maybe he can answer it in the thing. So I guess if that's the definition.
That's true.
Then, then anything that's on the, on the ocean side of the high wash of the wave would be considered encroachment and would need a, would need an easement under the normal process. Or if they can't get the easement, that structure would need to be removed. Is that?
Generally true, every situation is different, as you know, but generally true, yes.
Okay.
It is easement, it's not a variance, right? It's, and the state, the state pretty much grants easements. It's a way of making them making small change and authorizing these things. And if there is, if, you know, if there's a seawall that may be breached or encroaching or waves going over. If there is a habitable structure, I mean, we work with OCCL. If there's a habitable structure behind it, they're not going to make that, that owner take it down. They're going to allow them to repair it, give them an easement and protect that habitable structure. That's pretty much the, the understanding that, that we work together on.
Okay, perfect, perfect. And if you, if you can mention how many easements are in West Maui in your presentation, that would be great, but I'll turn it back. Sorry, Chair, I cut the line. Thank you, Chair.
The answer is choke easements.
Technical term.
Technical.
Vice Chair.
Thanks. So how many leases are state or over-the-water leases? Like chemo's or the yacht club or something? Those have, do those have leases to go over the water?
Yeah, we, Amy Wertz again did all that, who was OCCL, UHC grant, Tara's counterpart at OCCL. She worked with us and I think most of them had leases and easements, some did not. From DLNR, some did not. And they're what, they're, they're? Yeah, they're null and void now because of substantial damage. I think generally, I mean, I'm just, anyway, yeah. Kate, thank you.
Director?
Yeah, I just want to be very clear, each lease is individual. So some of them may be null and void, some of them may not be. It just really depends on how that lease was written, when it was written. So it's a very individualized thing.
It'll be important to us, won't it, at some point?
When you, when you review projects, potentially, yeah. But the overwater lease, yeah. Go for a long time. Yeah, and on, you know, on this subject, well, when we do our Front Street site visit, can slash, will we get a rundown of this again? You know, going over SMA rules and the shoreline rules as they pertain to the properties that we'll see on Front Street?
Yes, Chair, our intention is to give you information about what, what you're going to be seeing. So we can, we can talk about leases, we can talk about all of those.
Okay, and then even like
Individual properties.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. And like how the rules would apply, whatever. Whatever, what wiggle room or operating space we have within the rules.
In general terms, for sure.
Okay. So you got two minutes.
Well, just, just to say that, to answer your question, our, our shoreline team is working 24/7, trying to figure out what's going on in Lahaina. And we can present a lot of that to you. Again, as Director said, every situation is different. There are some, some simple rebuilds, some, you know, ones where they need to accommodate and then some that are rebuilding in harms way, as you can imagine. So we're, we're going through them one by one. And, you know, all I'll say is I, I don't have time for the shoreline rules. Obviously, we can do it at another time. But just to, as a preface here, these shoreline rules are 10 years in the making. Changing rules, as you know, the SMA rules and shoreline rules is, it took a decade. Blood, sweat and tears of hundreds of hours of Tara Owens trying to figure out, you know, how do we incorporate sea level rise into the future? You know, it's, it's different. And then along came the sea level rise viewer. You guys did adopt these rules just recently. So we do have the erosion hazard line. And you know, this is, it's a game changer because the, our shoreline rules with the erosion hazard line gives us a planning tool, say 70 years or 50 years into the future, where, where we have a regional strategic planning tool. And now with Lahaina and everywhere else, it, it, it will, through generations, it, it, it will help us. And thank you for, for passing the rules. And we can talk about that at a, at a future time. But the other, the quid pro quo for these, these shoreline rules is the, as you'll, as you'll, as we can demonstrate in the, in the, the handout and stuff. The erosion hazard line in 70 years incorporating sea level rise into it or 3.2 feet. It goes, it goes out to Halama Street, it goes out to Haoli Street. It goes out past Front Street in some locations. So it consumes these lots. So the quid pro quo is that many, many properties around the islands now become non-conforming structure because they're there. They're in within the erosion hazard line. And I'll just conclude by saying that what we've done is we have 28, 28 different new and revised allowable structures and activities in the shoreline setback area. So we need to maintain and repair hotels and things that are, you know, we can't abandon things. So, and you know, we had many, many, many meetings all over with these rules and many with the planning commission. And thanks for, you know, Commissioners Hippolito and Thompson, who have been through the wringer on all this stuff for all these years. So I'll end there and I do have one slide on implications for Lahaina, or should we leave that, Kate? Just, it's just, I'll, I'll just end there, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Be more time respected.
Yes, and we can put good time to this and have good questions.
And I just want to mention that there are three handouts. Tara's presentation, SMA rules, shoreline rules. They didn't get posted. We will post them on the agenda site for everyone, anyone who wants to look at these after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Yeah, just briefly, before we turn it over to the folks at OEV Resources, I just wanted to say thank you to my shoreline's team. These guys work, like Jim said, very, very hard. One thing that came up during testimony that I wanted to just address briefly is that, yes, portions of the rules that you adopted have been invalidated. I want to be very clear, it's not the shoreline rules. The shoreline rules are fine. The, the categorical, categorical exemptions in SMA rules were challenged. And so those are invalidated. That's, that's what is, what is at issue here? So I just wanted to make that very clear and clarify that from the testimony. But that's all, thank you to the, to everyone.
Yes, thank you for covering that.
We will try to get this on the first January agenda, just to, for continuity for the shorelines piece.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now without further ado, Belina Mai, Makealai, Kumukaponoai, thank you for being here. Please, go ahead.
All right, aloha, kako, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, should be just fine.
Let me know if you can see that.
Uh, yes, it's partial screen now. If you can make that full screen, I think we can see it better.
How is that?
Oh, we're seeing your presenter view now.
Gosh, I'm so bad at this. Let's see.
Think if you swap.
Let me swap this again. Okay, what can you see?
Now we see your desktop with the PowerPoint.
Okay. So from here, how do I go ahead and make it bigger? Or just, this is what happens when you don't have all your tech people with you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to help, Director. If you click on it, just do like you're gonna share this, like you're going PowerPoint mode, presenter, or present. Just click like you're gonna present, like the little. Yeah, okay, so now up in the left, on the left-hand side, there's probably one that says swap view.
Mine says display settings, swap view. How's that?
Yes, perfect, got it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, aloha, kako, I will try and get through this in about 25 minutes here. Thank you very much for having me. Nice to see you, Director, as well as Poto and Commissioners of, of the Planning Commission. My name is Kaponoai Molitau. I am the Director of the Department of OEV Resources, or what we call Ka'ohi Hana Malama Kumua'iva'i Ohi'i. And so a little bit about this department and how it was established in 2022. The Maui County residents voted to amend the Maui County Charter establishing a new Department of OEV Resources. Effectively in July 1, 2024, there shall be a Department of OEV Resources consisting of a Director of OEV Resources and the necessary staff. The Director of the new department shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council with qualifications including experience in native Hawaiian cultural resource management, experience in native Hawaiian cultural practices in the county, proficiency in Hawaiian language, five years of leadership experience. And so. here are the functions of the Department of O E V Resources. Although the functions of the department are not clarified in the charter, the powers, duties and functions of the director are: one, to be the administrative head of the department; two, collaborate with the mayor, the executive branch and the council to ensure proper management of O E V resources throughout Maui County; three, design and implement programs to care for and develop O E V resources; four, guide the county in the correct usage of the Hawaiian language, including place names and the integration of Hawaiian language in county functions; five, promote healthy ecosystems through natural cultural resource regeneration, protection and sustainable utilization; six, advise state and federal agencies on all programs and projects that affect O E V resources in Maui County; seven, report to the mayor and council annually on the county's overall performance in meeting O E V resources objectives and any issues that could be addressed by ordinance; and eight, perform other duties and functions as assigned by the mayor or managing director. So as of July 1, we stood up these three particular divisions. And the first of them are what we call our Kipuka Division. I utilize Mele or stories or or old oli that help to guide our principles of these particular divisions. And so this one, Olelo, Halau Lahaina Mola le Ma'luika Ulu, comes from an old text that speaks about this particular area of Lahaina. And so through that, it also brings us a little bit of a roadmap on how we can heal our Aina. And so with that, we utilize that particular olelo to help stand up this particular division. Safeguard and steward lands of concentrated natural and cultural importance to ensure enduring access to healthy natural resources and spaces where our community may thrive. The next division that we stood up is called the Kumuhuiola Division. And the area that we took this particular olelo or this saying, is from a context of a oli that is what we considered a Ko'iho'ua or birth chant of our islands, championing and preserving the life giving, life sustaining elements of the natural world by defending and amplifying the conditions essential to healthy ecocultural landscapes and vibrant native cultural resources. And then the third division that was stood up here at the Department of O E V is called the Paikaleo Division. And this particular olelo or saying, speaks about when the words come out from the the voices of our chiefs or the voices of our ancestors, or really the voices of our land, that is the voices that we should listen to. Revitalize the use of Hawaiian language in government and in our community in sincerity and fidelity to both official languages of Hawaii' English and Olehau'. So this particular vision division is to uplift the Hawaiian language in the county of Maui. So a little bit more diving a little deeper into each of the divisions so that you all have a a clearer understanding of what we're doing. The Kipuka Division, the O E V strongholds. The mana'o or the thought behind it is what a Kipuka is, a calm place in high seas, a deep place of sanctuary in a shawl, a break in the clouds, an oasis in the lava bed that houses new growth, a clearing in the forest. The mission is to safeguard and steward lands of concentrated natural and cultural importance to ensure enduring access to healthy natural resources and spaces where our community may thrive. So when we think about Kipuka areas, one that comes to mind quite clearly is the Mokuula Mokuhinia. As we we have all witnessed, the executive order being signed over by Governor over to the county of Maui now becomes part of the Kulianna of this department. The other areas are things like the Halau of O E V Arts, the Loko of Nalehu, Mapulehu, Ka'ulaha, Hamakuapokukai, O'kipa, open spaces, Aina for natural cultural resources, Wahepana designation for county lands are the parks, Cultural Heritage Center in conjunction with Artifacts Repository, Hybrid Cultural Archaeological Monitoring Certifications, the annual County C I P review, annual G E T D H H L infrastructure review and recommendations, Maui Planning Commission ex officio, Department of O E V Resources Countywide Advisory. So that's one division. Second division is what we know as the Kumuhuiola Division. The mana'o here is a water course or stream, the source of life, the fountain of all creation. This mission is to champion and preserve the life giving, life sustaining elements of the natural world by defending and amplifying the conditions essential for ecocultural landscapes and vital native cultural resources. So the goal in this particular division is to become nature's rights advocacy, amplifying the voice of the elements, support Hawaiian cultural practitioners, cultural resources, the inventory revitalizing past cultural resources, extending potential future future cultural resources, cultural overlay mapping, artifacts repository and preservation, disaster recovery support for natural culture resources, holistic approach to sustainability and resiliency, protective legislation for natural cultural elements and healthy environments, Eli Kupuna training for county employees, Hawaiian culture, language, education for county employees and Maui community. Please let me know if I'm going a little quick for everybody, just want to be respectful of everyone's time.
Good piece. Mahalo.
Our third division is known as the Paikaleo Division, our O E V Voices. Paikaleo to empower and uplift native Hawaiian voices to activate and engage in Hawaiian language. This mission is to revive and reinvigorate the use of Hawaiian language in government and our larger community in sincerity and fidelity to both official languages of Hawaii' English and Olehau. Our goal is bilingual Hawaiian government, translation of official government documents, educational workshops in Hawaiian culture, Hawaiian language for Maui County employees, educational workshops and resources in Hawaiian culture and Hawaiian language for the Maui Nui community, recognize Hawaiian cultural events, historical remembrances and Hawaiian cultural dates of importance, Hawaiian cultural resources and informational database research and audit of cultural impact surveys. Again, there shall be a Department of O E V Resources consisting of a Director of O E V Resources and the necessary staff, Native Hawaiian Cultural Resources Management, Native Hawaiian Cultural Protoc, proficient in Olehau Hawaii leadership experience. Here we have the beautiful Deputy Director Kikai Robinson and and Director Kaponoai Molito there at the Manu Alala release. So July 1, the Director of O E V Resources, which is me, stood up and I was all of one in the department. Here we currently are in the month of December and we have the following. We have Deputy Director, our Private Secretary, our Lead Archaeologist, G I S for Analyst, our Lele Hove specialist, and we are finalizing our Grant Coordinator. We didn't think it would take this long to get to this point, but we are realizing that in order to go fast, you gotta go a little slower here in the county. So this is what we envision our Department of O E V Resources to look like and the potential organizational chart of this. It will have a Pō be led by our Lead Archaeologist, our Deputy Director and Private Secretary, and we will have three divisions, our Kipuka Division, which will also look at expanding, will need our own Division Secretaries, G I S Analyst, Legislative Analyst, Aina Agent, a Repository Curator, an Aina Enforcement, Halau of O E V Manager, Halau of O E V Security, Halau of O E V Arts Assistant, our Molaka'i District, Lana'i District and Hana' District. For our Division Head for Kumuhuiola, it will also need the following, our Division Secretary, our G I S Analyst, Researcher, Legislative Analyst, Practitioners for Blessings, Practitioners for Hanano'ao, Practitioners to Malama Eli Kupuna, Mokuula, Mokuhinia and our Loko of Nalehu. And then our Paikaleo Division, Division Secretary, Translator 3, Researcher, Translator 2, Lead Analyst, Translator 1, Cultural Resource Commission, Maui Nui Planning Commission and our Beryl Council. So as you can see, the directive in which the Department of O E V Resources is reaching out, we look to expand to make sure that we have a really good outreach in our community and to make sure that we're very engaging in that community. So here are our five fiscal priorities for this coming year. Helu'e kahi, define and communicate to the community as well as our local, state and federal partners our mission, vision, values, our strategic goals, priorities, our priority projects, objectives and plans for the coming year. Number one. Number two. Helu'e lua, establish the department, our office, staff, online presence and educational outreach to fulfill our strategic goals and objectives. This includes networking with community partners and organizations and meeting with all of our other County of Maui Department Heads, Council Members, Boards and Commissions to discuss our collaborative together and the needs of the community that we serve. Helu'e kolu, advocate for the preservation and protection of O E V resources countywide by supporting native Hawaiian practitioners, natural cultural resource planning and implementation, hazard mitigation planning and implementation, contributing to disaster recovery efforts after the August 2023 wildfires, reinforcing bilingual government proceedings in Maui County and offering authentic advice for government decision makers from a Hawaiian cultural perspective. Helu'e ha, generate with prudent advice a sound financial blueprint for the Department of O E V Resources for the coming years, solicit grant funds to support Maui County community projects, confer grant awards to community partners supporting work that aligns with the Department of O E V Resources strategy, mission, vision, values, goals and objectives. Helu'e lima, participate in changes to legislation, laws, ordinances, commissions, boards and councils that affect O E V resources as outlined in Kipuka, Kumuhuiola and Paikaleo Divisions as described. Here is the Maui County Charter, Section 8-8.3, the powers, duties and functions of the Planning Director. And what I really want to make sure is we highlight number three and four. Recommend revisions of the general plan at least every 10 years to guide the development of the county, quote, in collaboration with the Director of O E V Resources. Number four, repair, administer and enforce long range planning programs in collaboration with the Director of O E V Resources. I highlight those so that we are mindful about what this charter means for all of us to understand. Maui County Charter 8-8.3. Number five, repair, administer and enforce a cultural resource management plan in collaboration with the Director of O E V Resources. Moving over to seven, review the list of proposed capital improvement projects contemplated by the county and recommend the order of their priority to the mayor in collaboration with the Director of O E V Resources. Maui County Charter, Section 8-8.4, the initial paragraph of the Planning Commission. This 8.4 says each planning commissions, each planning commission shall consist of nine members appointed by the mayor with approval of a council. Members of each planning commission shall be residents of the island of the planning commission on which the member serves. The Directors of the Departments of O E V Resources, Public Works, Environmental Management and Water Supply shall be non-voting ex-official members of each commission. Again, reinstating that we want to be a part of the discussion. So our last screen says a question. Behamakoe kakoe yaoko, how can this Department of O E V Resources collaborate with and support the Maui Planning Commission, Lana'i and Molaka'i Planning Commission? And then I'll end it there for any questions. Pretty good, I got nine minutes for questions.
Yes, on time with with time to spare. Mahalo. Commissioners, questions?
I'm gonna end share.
Oh, yes.
There we go.
I guess I have a question if nobody has a question yet, and I think this might be for the Director or Mr. Hopper, but being that O E V Resources is an ex-official member of the commission, so they can there there's no permission needed or anything, right? That means they're open to sit in all of our meetings and participate in discussion and everything, just like any other member, they just can't do any actions or vote?
I I think that's true, I'd want to look at that again, but I mean, participating in a contested case hearing, they would need to be called as a witness, for example. But otherwise, if you're an ex-official member, yeah, I think you can you can certainly come to the meetings and on non non contested case items, participate in the discussions if if there's questions from the Commissioners.
Okay, and so that means like for say SMA use permits that we're deciding on. We they would have to be witnesses in those?
I suppose what could happen is the applicant should consult with them as part of the application process in those cases, particularly if there's if there's something within their purview that would be implicated there. I think the rules allow for the department to require consultation with applicable agencies if a permit's coming to you. So that's probably the best way that would happen along with any other department. And if you wanted them there, I think you could have them there as, you know, to to ask questions. But i- in general, if there's a contested case, they'd be subject to cross examination and and questioning from the other from the applicant in those cases.
Okay, so in that case, we can we can have them present at the meeting and if and when questions arise, we can just ask them and it just the understanding is that the if there's an intervenor and then, of course, the applicant can ask them questions also. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay.
And like they're they're sort of like any other agency that they would be consulted, like I think water, D E M, planning, Public Works, those are agencies that can be consulted as part of the review process. So I think that's that's probably the best way to do that.
Okay, and then for our South Maui Community Plan Meetings, they can be present at all of those and participate.
Yes.
Okay. And Director, you have something to add?
Just briefly, I in the coming year, so it was brought to my attention not long ago that that typically these Directors did attend your meetings. And so some time ago, maybe 10 years ago, they stopped doing that, that I've I'm moving forward with making that change so that because as you saw today, Director Stoffel Bean was incredibly helpful to your decision making process in the first one. You know, it's wonderful to have Director Molito here as well. So I think having those those folks is critical and in the first year, first part of the year, we're hoping to get all of them back.
Fantastic.
Or designate me.
Yes, helpful. Thank you. Yes, Kumukaponoai, does that answer your questions on your last slide?
All right, mahalo.
Okay, yes, and then Commissioners, any further questions at this juncture? Vice Chair.
Welcome aboard, you seem like a great asset. You're well spoken, by the way, you come out clear, it's very nice.
Thank you.
Questions for anybody else? Okay, seeing none for now, well, are if you're if any of you are available, Kumukaponoai, we have our South Maui Community Plan Meeting starting at 3:00 and then our meetings are the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, starting at 9:00. Yes, it would be fantastic to have your perspective and everything to offer. So thank you again.
I appreciate the opportunity to share and and really that that is the opportunity of this particular department is to engage in meaningful discussion. I apologize that I'm not going to. I apologize that I'm not going to be able to make this next, this 3 o'clock meeting, but I will definitely make sure that next one out, I or a rep from our department will be present.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And on that note, it is 2:56 PM. We have our next meeting starting at 3:00. And so to give everybody some time to stretch, get nourished and hydrated, and then start up again, let us move to adjourn this meeting. And then I guess Commissioners probably need a little bit of time since it's been a long time since our last break. So let us reconvene at 5 past 3:00 if we can. Or we gotta convene at 3:00 and then call a break?
I would suggest convening at 3:00 and then calling a break, just because that way folks online know what's going on. We've tried the other way and it's been unsuccessful.
Okay, so Commissioners, can we just stick around until 3:00? Sign on to the other meeting. When 3:00 hits, we'll make the announcement to everybody and we'll keep a break until 3:10. Copy that? Roger, Dodger. Okay, thank you, everybody. Mahalo.